Okay, it is just a little bit after seven. Everybody's present? Thank you for being here on time. We're going to start with invocation given by Gracie McGard, or Grace McGard, sorry. And come up to the mic. If the light isn't green, push the, it is green, okay? So you're good.
Heavenly Father, thank thee for this beautiful day that we can live and enjoy this land and the beauty that surrounds us. Thank thee for this community and the opportunity that we have to associate with one another and have these relationships and grow and strengthen one another. And thank thee for the opportunity that we have to have the time to plan our city and make it a better place to live. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Brian, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I don't get to do this very often because there's usually scouts. Please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations today. We do have unscheduled public appearances, but before we start that, let me just say, I'm trying to repent of a bad behavior, so let me just lay out the rules for public comment. The purpose of public comment in a public meeting, whether it be planning commission or city council, is for you to share your opinion or thoughts with us. It's not to engage in a debate with council. If you have a short question and staff can answer it, they'll answer it really quickly, otherwise we'll get back to you on that. But the purpose of your time here to share information with us is for us to share, for you to share stuff with us that will help inform a decision. If there are a lot of people talking about the same issue and you feel the same way as the person that just spoke with, spoke before you, you can just come up and say ditto. That's okay, then we'll know that there are two people that think the same way. And I do, as a matter of policy, allow public input on action items that are public hearings, but today, all of the action items are public hearings, so they'll all be official public hearings. We do have green forms in the back if you want to fill them out and give them to member staff right here and indicate what item you want to talk about and what your thoughts are there real quickly. And we will take those and we'll take the comments in order that we receive those. You can repent and say, oh, you know, I wasn't planning on, but now I want to comment after all the people that have filled out cards have spoken. So with that, if you have a, something other than what's on the agenda to share with us, you have time to do so. Anybody want to give unscheduled public comment? And we have one. Say your name and...
Yes, Neil Evans, thirty year, almost forty year resident of Highland. I guess this may be the most appropriate place to submit this. I have an idea, concerns and comments. It pertains pretty well to some, most everything here, other than address you'd do three or four times, but I have three issues I want to talk to you about. One, I wish we would get back, council, back to where it was Highland started forty years ago. We're an open community, we're a trails community, we're open space community, we're a low-density community. If we'd get back to those basics, we wouldn't be in these meetings month after month, week after week, talking about the same issues all the way along. When we talk, when we talk about trails, I met with you six or six weeks, eight weeks ago. I know where Brian is coming from, Scott and Ed and Kurt, and I agreed with all four of you, and you're right in what you're saying. But we need to get back and talk about if, if trails are for sale, then sell them. If they're not for sale, why put our community through this effort time after time? Why pit our neighbors against neighbor? We've got neighbors that won't even talk to each other now after they have been, and we've been out gathering signatures for this. We talk, in Brian's issue, he says, we're not here to jerk people around. And I respect that, but really, we are jerking, we are jerking people around if we say, this is for sale, here's the process, here's the value of it, and then get here and say, no, we're not going to do it. Now, one way or the other. And when we talk about density, we've got here on the density, if we want to look like Southeast American Fork, if we want to look like Wesley High, Saratoga Springs, or Eagle Mountain, have you ridden out there? It's chaos. That's what we're doing. And we've got things on this agenda that will increase density, 700 percent in one area, 400 percent in another. What are we doing, guys? My concern is that we've got apparently thirty, about a third of our city left to develop. And I'm not against development, but the precedence that I keep talking to you each time I come to you is the precedence, if we continue to do this, what are we going to do with the other thirty percent of our property that's left? And I just want Highland to remain like we've been. We are approximately a six-square-mile landlocked island. Why do we want to have to look like everything around us? We don't need that, guys. Let's, let's, let's get back to basics and stop a lot of the contention that you're facing, I'm sure you feel it, and we feel it. The other issue, the third issue, so I talk about trails, we talk about density, and the third issue is the apparent proposed tax increase that you've got for the fire and police. I believe, I've gone through budgeting, I've spent time in this, but when we go through this budgeting issue, why on earth are we dedicating a tax to any specific department? I know you did that on roads, but we, if you need a tax increase, get it in the general fund and make every one of your fundable departments then fight for those issues, for those dollars every year, rather than saying, this amount we raised, and we're going to spend that for, in this case, fire and police. I'm not against fire and police, but I'm just saying, don't fund it that way. Get it in the general fund and make them fight for it. So I respect what you're doing, but please, guys, let's get back to basics.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Our first item is consent items. We have an action item for approval of minutes, and I saw that one of the council members had, had, put some edits in, and those were done.
Minor changes.
And so then we have designation of open space property for disposal in Beacon Hills, Utah Community Development Block Grant Program Interlocal Agreement, approval of contract with Echoes Paving, approval of contract with M&amp;M Asphalt Services, excuse me, approval of contract with Morgan Pavement and Hallbrook Asphalt Company. And those were the A, B, C, D, E, F. Does anyone want to pull any of those items?
Mayor, could we pull items B and C?
Okay.
And I would make a motion that we approve items A, D, E and F.
A second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Approving items A, D, E and F. And I'm impressed.
I'll vote yes. My, my machine isn't up yet.
Okay. So that passes unanimously. Okay. Ed, did you have something on item B?
Yes, on item B, when we continued that item two weeks ago, there was request one and a request two. I noticed in the consent agenda item, we're only including consent, or request number one.
Correct.
There, we had discussed, talking to Todd about whether or not it was practical to extend the property purchased to request number two or not, and I, I didn't see any feedback back from Todd.
We had a discussion with the resident in question about the matter, and she withdrew her request for item two.
So they don't want to expand that then?
No.
Okay.
And then item C?
Were you going to say something, Todd?
Go ahead, if you want to, yeah.
So I was just able to look at the property. We had looked at it before. The, we would need that area for an emergency. If there were ever an earthquake or something, we need to rebuild the tank, we need to be, have an area to set up a crane. We cannot do it to the east, the hillside, that's a fill slope. So we, we as staff felt like it was important to keep that property in case of an emergency with our water system, to reconstruct that.
Okay, thanks. That was the piece we were messing a couple of weeks ago. On, on item number C, the community, Utah County Community Development Block Grant Program, my recollection is when we rejected that a few years ago, there were strings attached to that agreement that would be a potential encumbrance to the city. I just wanted to make sure that there aren't any hidden strings or obligations that the city would assume by agreeing to that.
But by, by agreeing to this, we just are allowed for the next three or four years to apply for grants if we would want them. And I talked with the MAGD director, Andrew Jackson, about it. I said, well, we're, you know, we don't, we're not in a city that would typically use this. And one item that came up, if we ever wanted to put an elevator in the community center, there's a grant that we could apply for, that would apply for that. And then we could look at if there were strings attached to it on that specific item or not.
So it'd be on a grant?
But just, just saying that we, we want to be eligible doesn't put any encumbrance on it. And I thought it would...
It would depend on the specific grant request then?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know that we'd ever use it. I just didn't want to handcuff somebody four years from now.
I'll move that we accept items B and C.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we accept items B and C.
My vote is yes again. I'm sorry, I'm still bringing up my computer.
Was there any discussion from any other council members? So Ed's a yes?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously? Okay, next item. Wow, we're on page two already. Hey, maybe it'll be done by 7:30.
Don't count on it.
So item, item three is Public Hearing slash Ordinance Development Code Amendment related to the size of a PD district. Nathan, were you going to take that, or Tim?
Tara, Tara has that.
Oh, great.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. There you go. So, sorry. So this is the current general land use map. You can see that there are mixed-use designation designated in the city. In section 3.510.8 on the PD district in the development code, it allows for city council to approve modifications to standards in the development code. Some mixed-use designation locations are under 10 acres and on our busy road, and so they are not, standard residential zoning isn't the best fit. And so those are the ones kind of brown looking on the map. The new section that we are proposing is removing number A on the PD district under general provisions under 3.510. Removing from the, sorry. This change helps clarify the development code as requested by the city attorney. We did go to Planning Commission on April 30th. They did vote six to one to recommend approval on a text amendment. They did request that we review our original wording to help clarify it more, and so we, we chose to remove number A under the general provisions. And this would remove the total acreage requirement under the PD district, which is currently saying 10 acres. Any questions?
Any questions from council? If not, let's, let's go ahead and open the public hearing on this matter. Use my gavel. Open it up. Is there any one that wants to speak to this issue? Go ahead and come up. That was perfect timing.
Yes, I'm Wade Hadlock. I live in the Eldros subdivision in Highland. I just want to make a comment on the PD district and the 10-acre rule. After what we've gone through the last couple of weeks with a proposed PD district in the city, I've been, I think the 10-acre rule is a good one. When you make a PD district, you're saying there's going to be an HOA in there, you're saying that the rules and the densities and things can be different than the other zones that we have. And when you come with a two-acre or a three-acre PD zone, it becomes hard to, to manage it. So if I've got an HOA with not very many homes in it, I've got to have enough homeowners step up to the plate to be on the board, to run the board. They can outsource some of the work, obviously, but it's up to the community to have enough people in that HOA. If they run into trouble, they could come to the city for help or ask the city to support, and there's, it's going to be hard to undo that. Also, with the small HOAs, if they do have things like private roads, it's hard for them to come up with enough revenue and keep enough revenue on hand to deal with all the issues they might have to deal with. So I thought it was a pretty good rule in there, and thank you for fixing the wording. That's it.
Thank you, Wade. Doug, it looks like you want to speak?
Hi, I'm Doug Courtney. It just, first of all, apologies for not mentioning this until now. I just noticed it while I was looking through things. I noticed that a couple of items later on the agenda, there's the potential approval for a 2.85 acre PD district, and that this ordinance says that it takes effect immediately upon its first posting or publication. Just wondering if you need to change that to take effect upon passage in order to allow later, since presumably it won't have been published or posted in the next 20 minutes.
Good question. That's a fair question, Tim. You want to?
The language about publication is a little bit archaic. More recently, we always put upon adoption of the city council.
Okay, any other comments? All right, closed public hearing. Council, it's yours.
One of my concerns, and Wade expressed some of the concern, we have, in this particular area, in this particular situation, a reason for a petition to reduce this. And the problem is, is that when we create a PD district, the intent was to look at the bigger picture. And we need, if we're not going to have this at 10 acres and require that whole area to become part of the PD, we need to have a master plan for that whole area or something to help drive direction for it. To piecemeal a small area into a PD makes no sense. There are, there are too many property owners who aren't being represented or have, as a city, it's our responsibility to make sure that the development of this city is timely and orderly. And in a situation like this where we have multiple people, multiple property owners who are wanting to do something at some point in time, without a master plan and we do piecemeal, it's going to cause chaos, in my opinion, in trying to move forward. And we're going to be leaving out certain individuals. If we leave them out, then those who apply first may have advantages over those who may apply later. It may cause other kinds of unintended consequences. So I'm not as tipped over about having to leave this as 10 acres as I am the concept was, to make sure that it's big enough that you can actually deal with the issues in, in concert with a big enough area that you can mitigate any of the problems. When we're dealing with a small piece of land and multiple landowners, I think we're, we're setting ourselves up for problems in the future. And so if, if, I'm not in favor of changing this unless we have something to replace it, to allow that property to have a master plan. Have the residents sit down together and work through something to where they can do it, where they can build. Now, there's obviously a problem with that, because some don't want to develop today and may not for the next 10 years, but it's not right that, that we don't have some plan. And we, we put in the master plan for this particular property, we created and stubbed a road into this, into this area so that there is some future development. There was planning, we required the prior developer to prepare an area for this development. In my opinion, we have to have a road that's going to exit out of this other area. There has to be a separate, a separate exit for this particular area. Well, who's going to carry that cost? If that is, if that is put on one developer, and it may be the smallest property out of all the properties, the properties that are left, they won't be able to develop their property at all, because the road could, could effectively take up their whole property if it's left to just one property. So we're kind of in a tough situation of having to figure out how to make this work. And I don't want to hold back any of the, the property owners in being able to move forward, but they can't move forward just ignoring what all the other properties, the impact of the other properties. There has to be some level of mitigation. And to me, having the 10 acres allowed that to happen, but if we're going to reduce it, we need to have something else to help plan this particular area out. It's hard.
I have a question for Tim. Can we legally impose a requirement on the other two landowners as to how theirs would develop?
Like, there's four other landowners.
Three?
I think there's just three.
Well, the zoning authority would, would create what their development rights are. But short of a development agreement, you're not going to get more specific than that.
So how specific can we be?
With zoning?
Yeah.
You can, you can be quite detailed.
Let me jump in for a second here. I think we have two things going on. One is we have requests that's related, but not. And so we're kind of melding two issues a little bit, and maybe you want to discuss both at the same time. That's up to the council. Really, we have areas in the city that are mixed-use that don't meet the 10-acre requirement. And so the question becomes, what do we do with those and what zoning works? If it's not PD, then it should be something else. And maybe we should be drafting and looking at future zoning for those areas in the future.
Nate, would you mind giving us some examples where you're saying there's existing PD district that's not 10 acres, just so we can kind of get...
So area just south of Ashford would be one. If I remember correctly, there are some areas around the town center that are also less than 10 acres, like Apple Creek was, that was less than 10 acres, where they applied for a PD. This, this particular, and we allowed them to go through PD that the council turned down. This was really intended to clarify what we'd been doing in practice. I do agree that when you're looking at an area, that it's important to master plan and look at that area. For example, up north, what we call section 23, we're working with, what, a half a dozen or more property owners, trying to get at least a memorandum of understanding that the city and the property owners can agree where we have the backbone infrastructure is going to be, the roads, sewer, all that kind of stuff, water sewer is going to be. So I, I believe it's, it's important to do that as you look at each individual area. My counsel would be that unless, we don't have very many options in our development code. So if we want to create options, that's great, we can do that, and we'd be happy to do that. We don't have a lot of options under development code for these smaller parcels where we've designated mixed-use for alternative development. And it really, and sometimes it takes a parcel-by-parcel basis, and we do our best that we can. We, we stub roads quite a bit in the city, much to the chagrin of surrounding property owners sometimes, or existing developers sometimes. But I, I would try to, I would counsel the council, if that's really a way to say that, is to try to separate the two issues and look at, is a PD really appropriate on parcels that are 10 acres or less? If the answer is no, that's fine, then, then keep it as it is. If the answer, and then we'll modify what we're doing when developers come in. If the answer is yes, great, I'll move forward. And then, as we discuss item number five on the agenda, then we can get into the surrounding property and whether it's master planned correctly and how do we do that and those kind of things.
And that's, and that's what I was trying to, that's what I did say, is if we're not going to have this as the, the barrier to have an unplanned area, I don't necessarily believe we have to have the 10 acres, but we've got to have something else that addresses what the real problem that this is going to create. And if we do it through some other process, I'm fine with that, but we need to be addressing it. We can't, I mean, we do not allow properties to be an island that is, is not accessible. Somebody, to create an area that they would be landlocked, to where they couldn't have value out of their property. Now, if they choose to do that, that's their choice, but as a city, we've got to make sure that they at least have a choice, not have that kind of impact to their property, where they couldn't use it. It would be worthless. And so that, to me, is, is what we need to be looking at. And if the residents choose not to do that, the owner, property owners choose not to do it, then that's, that's up to them. But we, we can't just, we can't just let this go through un, unviewed, un...
Unchecked.
Unchecked. There we go. So we, we need to do something, and I don't have a perfect solution. I don't have, I think there's a council and working with the, the property owners. I think we can come up with something that would help mitigate it.
You know, so Brian, looking at the four parcels, and I understand we were, we were hyper-focusing on one area. You have four property owners. It appears that there's, the one property owner has about 160 feet, if you want to say of, you know, of frontage, then the next one has 160, but the next one seems to drop down to 100. And I think the concern would be, here you are, three property owners down, and they need access out, and if that's the 100-foot property owner, he really lost off his development opportunity. And we're only maybe focusing on this one property, but probably what you're saying is, we need a plan to make sure all property owners are being treated fairly.
And if nobody allows the road to connect out to 4800, and we just keep pushing this and stubbing it into the next piece of property, that's almost the width of its whole property. I mean, that's half of his property to be able to push it out. Why would one property owner be stuck with, with a road that goes all the way through, tying it into the, into 4800? I mean, that's a, that's an expense that they, they have to pay for the road and then donate it, deed it over to the city, and they would cover 100% of that cost.
I think the problem that I have is that the 10 acres is an arbitrary number. It could be five, it could be 15, it could be whatever it is. And so I don't have a problem removing it. I agree that we need to take a look at the big picture, but I think we can do that. When, when item number five comes up, we can say, look, we don't have, we don't have a plan for that area, so we're not ready to approve it yet. I don't know. But, but just to leave it there as 10 acres is an arbitrary number, and I, I don't, I think it would just be easier if it, if it wasn't there.
I just wanted to make a comment here. We talked about this area when I was on the council before, and I thought the general consensus was to make this a mixed-use area. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so the only way you can have mixed use is if, right now with our zoning, is to have it a PD zone, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Because our concern was, is that people probably wouldn't want to build a palatial home on North County Boulevard across from the high school, that it was, it made good sense to have either some sort of commercial or office space there. And, and we've already had a proposal for possible office space in that area. So I, I guess my concern is, is I'm not sure how many acres this comes together. Kurt's looking at the maps and things, but there may not be more than 10 or 12 acres in the whole four lots there, because the acreage is a little over two and a half or something in this one. I know the Hogards have 2.68 or something. Is there a full 10 acres in this area?
I think it's about five to seven.
Yeah.
We can add it real quick.
So they can't do much of anything, period, unless we change the ordinance. So like Tim says, I think, I really think we're going to have to make some adjustments to this ordinance and allow PDs less than 10 acres. Unless people are going to be stuck, never be able to do anything with their property.
And I think also...
And I think also, I, I think we have to give some recognition to the planning commission who, who we pay big bucks to, to, uh, to think these things through and do some of the heavy lifting. And they've, they've approved it.
Uh, is there any discussion or?
What would be everyone's feeling if we make it down to five acres? Would that make it still large enough that they have to kind of work within a plan to be able to maybe have some ins and outs? But maybe, because I, I agree with Scott, you know, looking at this. I don't know if the whole, those four parcels together are even ten acres. And I do agree that this is kind of a commercial zone on the, you know, the front of the property. I don't know if that's, you know, a way to kind of work through it.
Like, again, my issue is not about the, the ten acres. It's more about making sure that, that we have some plan in place for residents who run into these kinds of things, that it has to be a master planned kind of situation where they're not believing that they can do whatever they want, that they have to work with their neighbors. But it gives some flexibility to be able to move forward with something. Because I don't think it's right that they are stuck until all the neighbors decide to do something. But there's got to be some way to be able to move forward with a master plan that allows, uh, all of them to have at least some say at the table before, you know, it, right now, it's first come, first served, kind of. Some of them couldn't do anything until this property is done to have a road in the back. Because if the middle properties wanted to do it, they'd have to come up from forty-eight hundred. They wouldn't even have a connection in the back. And so, I, you know, I'm just saying, I think that we need to have something in place so that as we run into these kinds of things, that it's, it's a fairness for all of the property owners to have some say in it. But they may not all get what they want, but at least it's a master planned out.
Uh, Nathan, what is the size range for the different PDs that we have designated in the city?
We only have one and that's Sky Estates.
Not, not existing. I'm talking about potential.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I wouldn't know that off the top of my head. This, this property is about, the whole area that we're talking about is about eight point six.
I'm hesitant to set another minimum, not knowing what the range is. Because then we're, we're back again reevaluating it at a later point. It'd be nice to know what the range was or, or not put a range in.
Yeah, we could, we could do some research and get that to you.
Is there a motion?
Does, does anybody disagree with the fact that we ought to be doing something to master plan areas like this? I mean, I, I'm, I'm trying to be careful with the word master planning because we don't have the right and shouldn't be dictating every detail of people's property. But we've got to at least give some direction and we do that constantly. We're, we're talking to people about where they have to put the utilities and where they have to do this and where they have to do that. Well, we need to know in, in this particular property where we're going to run the utilities out and other types of things. At some point in time, we have to do it. And I, I don't want to hold back somebody who wants to do something. But, you know, in my opinion, we're not going to be able to put enough housing back in the back to be able to continue to run it out the road that's already connected. The fire department is saying, what was it, thirty, thirty-two homes or?
Thirty.
And so, it's already going to force, in my opinion, another connection out onto SR ninety-two. Well, who, who pays for that? And how do they get access to that? There's only going to be so many, UDOT is only going to allow so many access points between the corner and, you know, going down that road. Well, who, who gets favoritism for which one and where they're placed? And so, we ought to have some discussion about that and, and try to help, um, this go in an orderly fashion.
So, you talk of UDOT allowing multiple roads.
Entrances, sorry.
Yeah. Uh, Nathan, what's the chance of that happening? It would seem like they might allow one. And that would dictate where we put the road.
Todd, can you, we had a conversation with them and they.
So, right now, what's going to happen is, is as this develops out, they're going to require certain properties to connect and create drive accesses, combining existing accesses if, if the front properties go to commercial. Uh, the concern is, is right now, the way it currently sits is there's kind of an access road currently. It's not dedicated. Um, whether UDOT allows for that current access to be a road access or not, still up in the air. Um, but ultimately, it's a UDOT road. We have to follow what their requirements are. The existing accesses that currently are out there do not follow their, their current policy. So, some of these are going to be grandfathered in. If this was just an, a, a current vacant lot with no access, then we would be tied more to what their current requirements are, if that makes sense.
So, there's two things we're talking about though. One is access into a, a retail or, or commercial. Another is a road.
A road, correct.
And they're going to count them pretty much the same. Not exactly the same, but they're not going to have an entrance into a commercial thirty feet from the road access.
Correct.
And so, that's, that's part of the concern is, is, you know.
Eventually, this, yeah, eventually, the access is going, going to dictate how development happens, eventually.
That's my question.
Right.
So, how are we going to know where that access is going to be or where they recommend it?
It.
I mean, we could put it somewhere, but chances are, they may not agree to it. Don't we have to have?
Well, that, that will determine. When, when they, when, when these individuals submit to Highland City as part of their civil review, our requirement is, is that they get access permits through UDOT's permits office. And so, they go through that process based on our reviews. And so, this development will be the same as any development that we do throughout that area. If, if we could get them to combine and, and do a master plan, that would be ideal. That's obviously the ideal. But until we have something in an ordinance that requires that, we can't keep them from, as, as staff, we can't keep them from developing. And we have to do our best to plan for the future and require those road connections where we can, so.
Uh, Brian, just a quick question on the, the master plan. I, I think my, my concern there is the master plan typically involves a fairly significant effort. Haven't we already designated this as a potential PD or multi-use zone? Uh, do we just need to define what's going in here better? Or I, I guess I'm a little confused what, what you mean in terms of updating the master plan.
It's, it's not our master plan. It's de- defining, uh, master elements in this particular area. So, it's stating, here is basically where the road's going to go. Here is basically the entrances into it. It gives the ability for those who are putting something out on the, on the frontage, an ability to get access and easement through their neighbor's property. They may get immediate access from, from, um, North County Boulevard. But at some point in time, when the others develop out, they would have to close that off and get access through some other area. But they would have an easement to be able to get that. And so, you know, it's that kind of thing that we're talking about. They don't have to develop every piece today, or not even in the next twenty years. But there needs to be some ability for us to know where to put the utilities, where the roads are going to go, where the access, all of those kinds of things, which, you know, it's, i- if we have it piecemeal, we may, uh, cause some of the properties to be unjustly impacted, negatively impacted without making some accommodation now and, and going through it.
Yeah, I think that's my concern is that we, we do have a responsibility to make some accommodation for the property owners currently who want to develop the property. But I understand the concerns. As far as the road access, is the city going to have any control over that? That'll be state on it.
Road access out onto SR or on, uh?
Out to North County.
North County.
Yeah.
We, if we updated our master plan, we could master plan it ourselves and tell them where the roads would be. You would master plan your roads. Can we not do that, Nathan?
Is that, is that correct, Todd?
No, you'd, we would try to work with UDOT, see where they are. But it, but with it being a state road, they would have the ultimate authority over it.
That's what I was thinking.
But they're, they're accommodating. I mean, the, the issue is, they're not going to want four different access points out of this.
Yeah, I agree totally.
And so, how do we help the property owners get a fair access, uh, for all of them? Or at least a, a representation of something that would be fair instead of creating this where it's not even a road, just a single access? And then nobody else even gets any access at all.
But I think, couldn't, couldn't we discuss that as each parcel comes to us and keeping?
Don't disagree, except that if you're not looking at the whole thing, then.
We can look at, we have the ability to look at the whole thing as they come to us one at a time.
Yeah, but I think we gotta be concerned because we could be stuck. Already the, the plan that's, you know, if we put a road in, you know, that's along the one property, then we've kind of made them, in a sense, that's where they'd have access or how. The problem is, this, this parcel does not have access going out to the highway. You know, or, you know, out to forty-eight hundred west. Is it, is the next parcel the one that's forty-eight hundred? Because it is going to, you know, it will limit that person and what they can do on their frontage when that road goes out. And I think the question is, out of those four, which one takes that detriment upon them?
So, that's, this discussion is probably germane to item five as opposed to this one.
It's both.
Well, except if you, if you can agree that we're going to do something, you don't have to give into details about this specific property because the ordinance is general.
Don't disagree. If we can agree to that, that was, that was where I was pushing out.
I don't think council disagrees with that. They're all willing to take the bigger picture. We don't have an ordinance for that tonight and couldn't create one. But we could ask staff to do that at a subsequent council meeting. So, if the mayor's ready for a motion, uh, just to place it on the agenda or place it on the table, uh, I would move that we, uh, approve an amendment to the section of the development code relating to the total acreage requirement in the planned development district as proposed by the, uh, and approved by the planning commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, looks like we're ready to vote.
I got locked out, but I'm a no. I'm a no.
So, that passes four to one. All right. Next item. Uh, public hearing resolution adopting the tentative Highland City budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Uh, I'm guessing, Gary, I know you were trying to pass that off to Tara, Gary, but I think this one's yours.
I'd be happy to let her talk though. Okay, every year we do a tentative budget. You know, this is the time of year that we do it. So, I thought I'd go over some of the assumptions behind the general fund budget. Uh, we stuck a three percent potential salary merit increase into the budget this year. And that equates to about an extra, if everyone got a three percent raise during the year, that would be an extra twenty-two thousand dollar cost in the general fund. Our dental premiums came flat, which was great. And medical premiums increased four point nine percent this year. And the hit to the general fund for that would be about seven thousand dollars.
We, we had originally planned on the forecasted ten percent on that, right?
Correct.
Nice, nice job, guys.
Let's go to the next slide. Okay, so, also in the budget is, we've got a hundred thousand dollars of previous year's money or fund balance or retained earnings, whatever you want to call it, to, uh, use for the sixteen hundred west road project that's required matching funds from us. In addition, uh, the county sales tax takes its effect. We're estimating two hundred thousand dollars.
Gary, can I pause for a second there? I think that's a kind of really good item. That's the road that goes to Costco. And so, it's improving it from ninety-six hundred north, south, right? And that is funded by MAG and we have a matching amount to go to that.
Right. And then the two hundred thousand dollars that we expect to get from the county sales tax increase, uh, we're sending a hundred thousand of that to our capital roads fund and fifty thousand dollars to our open space fund for trails and leaving fifty thousand dollars in the general fund to, uh, spend in parks, trails. Uh, in addition, we're assuming that, uh, city council is going to approve the transfer from our pressurized irrigation fund of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. The city uses, uh, our own PI to park, to water the park grass and park strips. And so, they actually, the general fund pays the pressurized irrigation fund a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Most cities, though, end up making the general fund whole by transferring the money back. And that's what this is, authorization to transfer a hundred and eight thousand dollars back to the general fund. Uh, the general fund also has a seven hundred, one thousand dollar revenue increase. That's either going to be by property taxes or by a fee to fund the increase requests from the police and fire that you see down below, a seven hundred, one thousand dollar increase, broken up in those dollar amounts of about five hundred and thirty-six for fire and a hundred and fifty-nine for police. So, that's also sitting in the, in this budget right now. Just to let people know, we refinanced the, the building bond and the park bond in two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen, saved as a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in one and three hundred thousand dollars in the other one. All those savings were front loaded and they pretty much ended, which is why you see our two bond payments for the parks and the billing going from eight hundred and thirty-four thousand to nine hundred and seventy-two thousand. Uh, and in conjunction with that, I thought I'd point out, a lot, some of that's paid with our impact fees. So, the park and public safety impact fees, you can see in, last year we collected four hundred and seventy-four thousand. This year I'm projecting three hundred and sixty-one and next year three hundred and two. So, the impact fees are going down, which means more money comes out of the general fund to pay the bond payment. And then, we're operating on the assumption that we had ninety-six building permits, uh, fiscal two thousand and eighteen. We might end up with sixty-five this year and forecasting about fifty-five next year. So, you can just see that's, that ties to the public safety fee going, uh, and park fee going down.
Gary, do those, uh, impact fees include the, uh, Boyer property?
No, I think that's in the road fees.
So, the, the Boyer would be in the total building permit number? We expect the, uh, to really come online late next fiscal year.
So, that you, you, either late next fiscal year or the following. If it's after June thirtieth, then it's next fiscal year, right?
That leaves the, uh, next slide. That leaves the budget for fiscal two thousand and twenty showing total revenue of nine point six-six million and expenses of nine point six-four. So, revenue exceeds expenses by fifteen thousand dollars. As a side note, I thought I'd put that the current cash balance in the general fund is two point three million dollars. And if you took our forecasted revenue of two, of fiscal two thousand and nineteen of eight point nine, and you divide that by twelve, you get seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars worth of expenditures per month. So, our current cash balance coverage is three point one months of expenses. And most cities like to have at least three months worth of expenses. Even though you would continue getting revenue, uh, that's just a, a number that they, they calculate at. Next slide.
Is, is there a bond holder requirement that we have for that? Do any of our bonds require, uh, some kind of reserve? Okay.
No. And so, I thought I'd normalize the budget numbers. Because if you look at the budget for this year, it's actually like nine point nine, no, nine point two million dollars in revenue and nine point two in expenses. However, in that number is using four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars of previous year's money, plus we sold property for three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, which is not in next year's budget. So, I went and tried to normalize the budget for this year, the forecast for this year and the budget for next year. And you can see those numbers of revenue this year, eight point four, expenses eight point eight. So, a net loss of four hundred and forty-one thousand. However, I'm forecasting actual revenue as eight point five million and expenses at eight point five million for a net loss of twenty-four point nine. And next year's budget normalized, taking out the fire and the hundred thousand dollars and the two hundred thousand dollars for the county sales tax that's not in the previous years. Try to make it look, how would the budgets look if they were the same? Eight point six and eight point four. So, if you compare the revenue forecast in fiscal nineteen to fiscal twenty, it's up about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I'm forecasting that total tax receipts next year will be at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more than this budget year. And expenses you see are about ninety thousand dollars higher. About thirty of that is salaries and about thirty-six of that is the elections being held next fiscal year. And we estimate that's going to cost us thirty-six thousand dollars more than it did, uh, than it's in the budget last year. So, that's just trying to give you an idea of what the budgets would look like if they didn't have all these one-time items in them.
Does that also not include the quarter cent tax then on the twenty-twenty budget?
Yeah, that's been taken out of the. Yeah, that's been taken out of the fiscal twenty, revenue and expense.
So the addition, the difference in growth between nineteen and twenty is just the growth of additional properties? Growth of added homes into our city?
Well, and sales tax, I mean, there's plus and minuses, try to, certainly get one big number out of that, out of all those accounts would be difficult, but the major increase in revenue is tax revenue next year. And the greatest increase expenses are salaries about thirty thousand dollars and the election costs of about thirty six thousand dollars.
Yeah, I was talking more of, of what the revenue, where the revenue is coming from. We're showing a growth in revenue between nineteen and twenty.
And most of that's from sales tax.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the, so the quarter cent sales tax from the county is not included, because you tried to normalize it, correct?
In the normalization, in the previous slide of the nine point six million revenue expense, it's sitting in there.
Right, I just want to make sure that, because it didn't look like that would be enough to cover the quarter cent sales tax. So I wanted to make sure that we weren't decreasing in sales. If you took that, it's about two hundred thousand. It's less than two hundred thousand between nineteen and twenty, so I was just trying to make sure I understood.
Is it okay now?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, let's go on to next slide, special revenue enterprise funds. Library revenue and expense, you see the library slightly negative, don't get excited about that. My spreadsheet allocates the overhead costs. Every time I change a little bit number, it allocates the overhead a little bit, so in essence, the library budget is balanced at three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars each. Remember that we had a discussion a couple of months ago about changing indirect overhead charge. The library was getting charged rent and all sorts of other items that we've stuck in there for about seventy thousand dollars after, uh, making the, I guess the way we charge uh, the same over everything, the indirect charge for libraries, eight million, eight thousand seven hundred bucks. And they're charged for paying the property tax on this building, and not the insurance, property insurance in this building is one million, one seventy five. So that's what the library's gonna look like and.
One thousand, one hundred and seventy five?
Yeah, one, that's their charge for the property insurance.
Yeah, I thought you said one million.
Yeah, if I did, I was wrong.
So, hey Gary, just as you, as you have the library fund up there, on the proposed budget twenty two dash forty three fourteen, we have, and I'm just trying to understand a little bit some of the increases, we go from two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget of eighty nine thousand four hundred, you know, roughly, then we budgeted this year a hundred and nineteen, but you're saying the forecast were only gonna be a hundred and nine in this year, but then we go to a hundred and thirty one.
Yeah, do you want to?
Do we know why there's such a great?
What was that number again?
Okay, so if you look at line item twenty two dash forty three dash fourteen.
On page eighteen.
And, and pay, and, in the budget year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we have a budget uh, of eight, eighty nine thousand fourth, or I guess the actual, it says forty, eighty nine thousand forty two, budget a hundred and nineteen.
That's year to date, right?
Is a hundred and nine year to date, or is that what you're forecasting to actually be?
Yeah, the hundred and nine's what I'm forecasting. Let's hope that's correct.
Hundred and nine, no, I, yeah. Year to date, but a hundred and nine's what we're forecasting, but we had jumped to a hundred and thirty one?
Correct, and I believe the library people's salaries part-time were adjusted upwards, is that not? You want to have Donna talk about that?
No, she did a, one other council meeting, I believe, where she said she gave her part-time workers a raise. Since we're also there in, in item number twenty two dash forty three dash eleven, we are forecasting there for salaries and wages sixty six thousand, but we're budgeting eighty, almost eighty five thousand. I'm just trying to understand why there's about eighteen thousand different there.
Much of the change from library had to do with all of the staff changes that we had, um, during the fall. Um, essentially it just, we forecasted for two full-time and probably eight part-time, and then you know everything that went on during that time.
Okay. I was, I was just trying, I'm just seeing these numbers also we hear, but it's also way, you know, what we're forecasting next year.
Well, and, and every year, everybody looks at what they think they're gonna charge their time to, so if they change their percentage from one account to another, it becomes difficult to track why one thing increased versus another.
So the, the forecast for that line item is down from what the original budget was, in, in part because Aaron, uh, spent some time in, in the library.
Right.
Library box, is that what we'll call it?
Should we go to the next slide? So on the sewer fund, we're looking at revenue of two point two three million and expense of two point three six. That basically means the sewer fund is a loss of one hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. Current cash balance in the sewer, uh, fund is four point two million, four hundred and sixty thousand of that is impact fee collections. And we got planned projects, uh, to spend down the road, that four million dollars of the lift station and what else you read there, so.
I think it's really important that residents, when you look at this, what we did is we forecasted out five years into the future, and we set rates based on that, because we knew that we'd have big projects, so we're gonna have big cash uh, coming in and we're gonna have big cash going out, and you're gonna see that number going back and forth. So some years you're gonna see, uh, spending significant amount more than what, uh, we're bringing in that year. But it's also because we were collecting some in advance prior years and built up this cash reserve. So having that become a negative number and having that huge cash balance have to do with both of those things. We're building up some cash, so we're not having to to, uh, bond for anything, and we're prepared for these, these big expenses that are coming. And they're just starting, as you can see this, the expenses next year are the first step, but we've got a lot more coming.
We want to move on to the pressurized irrigation slide. So we're forecasting revenue at two point three nine and expense at two point three zero, so, um, a positive there, and the current cash balance is three point three million, six hundred and fifty five thousand of that is impact fee collections. And then you can see some of the planned projects for the next two to five years, uh, in the slide there, I don't have to read those, but we got those. That's why we're collecting, saving the money like, uh, Brian said. And on the storm sewer, uh, about break even, five hundred and twenty nine thousand in revenue, five thirty seven in expenses. And we got planned projects of Mercer Hollow Drainage and Country French Detention Reconstruction, so that's what the one point three million dollars is for. And on the culinary, uh, we've got revenue of nine twenty one and expense of one point two million, so that's about a negative three hundred thousand bucks. We got two point nine million in cash and the planned projects are major well rema, uh, maintenance and, uh, pipe for the southeast area, so we'll be using that cash too. And then the last slide, we have our utility transportation fund, that's basically the road fee fund, so we got revenue of basically a million dollars and expense of a million dollars is what we told the citizens we would be spending. And some of the projects are sixty four hundred West, fifty eight seventy West, ten five hundred North. And right now there's a cash balance in that account of seven hundred and two thousand dollars.
Council, that's primarily from the delay of ninety six hundred, uh, north project that was scheduled this year. Decided to delay due to the sewer, uh, project that we have scheduled next year.
So does anyone have any questions on, uh, what the budget looks like?
Uh, Gary, just a, a real quick one. We have the, uh, funding from Spring Creek coming in, I'm assuming as early as June. I noticed that is not in the, reflected in the budget yet.
It could be June, uh, and looking at, we haven't seen the final civil plans for Spring Creek, so my guess it'll be pushed out a little bit.
Do we want to push that into the nineteen twenty budget then?
We probably should.
And how much you want me to stick in there?
Uh, we'll get, I'll get you the right amount. Okay, go ahead.
I have another question in regard to our, uh, debt service. And looking at the allocation, uh, to fund the, the debt payments, we seem to be taking a disproportionate amount from the general fund. Thirty thousand's coming from the capital project fund, a hundred and twenty from the park capital project fund, and eight hundred and twenty one from the general fund. Is there any reason why we're not allocating more from the park capital project fund? That particular fund has a, a, a fund balance right now of about a million four. And, uh, the particular bond that I was questioning is the park bond. And I would assume we would want to fund as much as we can from the park area to cover the park, park bond. So just looking for additional money for the general fund, because we, it would seem logical that we should be able to fund more of that out of the park capital project fund.
Yeah, so there, there's, uh, two avenues toward, uh, to answer that question. Uh, when the council adopted the, uh, park impact fee, there's two components. There's an existing buy-in component and a, and an existing future component that the city has to spend. By, uh, in twen, in fiscal year twenty twenty four, it's about two point two million that the city has to spend uh, to keep its level of service, to keep its, uh, impact fee current. Uh, basically, when we adopted the impact fee, uh, we committed to a certain level of service. And, and so all of the revenue in that account has come from impact fees. The council can choose to use that for the bond payment. Uh, just know that the, uh, bill will come due in twenty twenty four where we have to spend that money, so we have to get it from somewhere.
So the spending would be in addition to whatever we put on debt service then?
Correct.
Really comes down to a cash flow issue in twenty twenty.
So what's the, the two, two million, did you say?
Two point two.
Two point two in expenditures for parks?
Correct.
What about?
New money, new money.
New money?
So.
How do you define new money?
So the, for example, the expenditure of selling Spring Creek and investing it in, in Mountain Ridge, that would not be new money. Would be in addition to, in, on top of that.
And why wouldn't that be new money?
Uh, because we, because it was used with existing funds.
It was purchased with existing?
Excuse me, yes, thank you. It was purchased with existing funds.
We're actually still paying for that with a bond?
Yep.
And, and purchasing, uh, paying for a bond is not acquir, acquiring new park property?
Correct, because we're not, because we purchased it with the bond money, and if we sell that, okay, that's old money, so we either refund that sale or we invest it into Mountain Ridge, so that's not new money. Does that make sense?
What I'm saying is, isn't paying off the debt.
Paying off the debt.
In, investing in more park property?
It can, it can, if it's, if it's a new debt, then yes. If it's an old debt, then no. So we've, the bonds that we're currently paying are based upon debt that we incurred before with other, with old impact fees or with the income from old impact fees. If we do new
Thank you, Brian.
new types of things, then that would go toward the new stuff, the new bonds.
I, I think we need to compromise and just call it new old debt.
Or old new debt.
Yeah.
So we're, we're about five years out from that, uh, two million dollar obligation?
Correct.
And it doesn't have to be done at one time. We, every year that we, if we add things to the spring, or to the Mountain Ridge Park beyond what the current debt is, that will help reduce that amount.
Yes.
If we take money out of general fund or something like that and pay toward additional amenities on Mountain Ridge, that would lower the two point two.
Yep.
He's saying we have to have it done by that timeframe, but it doesn't have to be done on that date, it's any time between now and then. It'd be good if we're doing it.
So if we put Pervyans and Beacon Hills, that would, that would.
Yes, so any new improvement that we do, yes.
One of the, uh, discussions we've had regarding the disposal of, of open spaces, to put that money back into parks, is that considered new money?
Good question. I don't know. Could be.
My vote's yes.
Pardon me?
I said my vote is yes.
Yeah, that's what my opinion would be as well.
My vote would be yes, but I don't have a vote.
I would hope so.
Well, I, I think it comes back into our general fund, and if we use it out of our general fund.
It's new money.
Then it should be considered new money. I mean, it, that, that property was not acquired with park bonds or, or with impact fees.
It should be new, but I would want to confirm that before I.
Yeah, we'd want to validate it, but.
Okay. Well, that, that, that's my question, is whether or not we can allocate more from the park capital project fund to service that debt, so the general fund isn't obligated as much.
You certainly can, there's just a cost of the future.
Well, it distorts what we've, what we have looking forward. It may feel like that we don't have the debt obligation that we have to incur in park, um, needs. And so if you take it out, it's, if we take it out of there, we're gonna have to pull it out of the general fund later to be able to, to add that additional two point two million in park, um, new expenditures.
Thank you.
Okay, I had one question, Gary, on item number ten dash seventy two dash fifty five, Highland fling expense. It appears that the, we're, and I know Julie's doing a great job in some fundraising. We're budgeting sixty six thousand for the Highland fling where last year it was fifty. Do we believe this is gonna be money that's being raised as she goes out and tries to get more sponsors? Or is this coming out of the general fund, the extra sixteen thousand?
Uh, the extra sixteen thousand's coming out of the general fund. They, they expect the revenue on fund, uh, ten thirty eight ninety five Highland fling revenue would be fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty. So yeah, the general fund or the city's paying about sixteen, sixteen thousand dollars to have the fling.
Give me the, give me the item number again, just so I can look at it, where, where the revenue's coming in?
Ten dash thirty eight dash ninety five account number on page three. We've got future revenue of, uh, the budget revenue next year of fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. To offset the sixty six thousand dollars in expenses, so yeah, there's a net cost to the city of sixteen thousand dollars of having the fling.
But it appears we've increased our revenue also coming in.
Exactly, so if you notice that normally the council budgets for about twenty thousand dollars is what's spent on the fling, and we've come under that every year, and so this year.
So council, council, that's net?
Yes, net.
Because we, we pay for it all, and then we get the revenue in, and twenty thousand comes out of the budget and never gets repaid back.
Exactly, so net, the council typically budgets twenty thousand dollars. We have come in under that, um, for the past few years. Uh, this year we are asking, you're right, so revenue and expenses increased for a net of sixteen thousand dollars. We use that other four thousand to help offset the cost of adding that part-time position to the events budget.
And just as, uh, this is as good a place as any for me to interject this, but, uh, the, um, AF Chamber has raised an additional fifty three hundred that they brought in. It, it hasn't come in, they've got commitments, so when it comes in, then, then we'll have it, but right now it's looking at fifty three hundred plus another, um, fifteen hundred in in-kind type of donations or some coupons and things that is gonna offset an expense, um, it depends.
And that statement means, uh, money that we were not working toward and did not believe was coming?
The vendors that they had listed for that fifty three hundred were not on the list.
Were not on our list, awesome.
So the, and it's all ad space, so it makes the magazine a little bit better, which increases our costs, but I'm, I'm impressed.
Yeah.
So all in all, it sounds like the fling will not, even though the budget went up, the money that's being revenueed and everything, and we're actually not gonna be spending as much this next year as we did the years before, so we'd hope by hi, hiring this extra part-time employee to free up, it's working, is what we're saying, is our community is kind of working a little bit there for the fling.
Uh, it's working in some regards for sure. We're still struggling, she's not quite hit her sponsorship goals yet that she was hoping, but we've got another few days, but it definitely has been a help and, and a success in other areas for sure, adding that person.
It, it's brought the tension level down.
It absolutely has. Um, just having, you know, two bodies at an event, who knows what's going on, helps Julie immensely. Um, and allows her to be able to take vacations during the summer, you know, and spend time with her child who's graduating and things like that. Uh, in addition.
Allow that to happen?
Well, you know, we weren't for the past two years, so, and I think Julie kind of hit her max, her breaking point, and I don't blame her, so.
The hiring of this individual was not solely intended to boost revenue.
No.
It was to help offset the work hours that, that the existing person was putting in.
Exactly, and we very much appreciate that.
She's helping with boosting revenue is a positive.
Exactly.
And I, I am expecting the chamber to come up with, if we're going to, if we have the chamber amount in this budget, um, I'm expecting them to come up with a few more bucks than five thousand. They're working on it. They're, they're, it's, every week they're looking to add more, so I'm hoping that they will vastly exceed the goal. Well, it's time for a public.
Any more questions?
Uh, I have one other question. Uh, this is the, uh.
We've used your a lot of time.
Have I? I'm sorry. This is my annual question. Have I? I'm sorry. This is my annual question about fund balances in the general fund. Gary and I had a lengthy discussion this afternoon, but I, I just wanted to bring it up again. Currently, we, we have a fund balance in excess of statutory limitations. And so the question for budgeting purposes is how much of that are we going to use in our current budget process or for future capital improvements? I think we need to address that. And, and again, it depends on where we end the year, but there is the potential. I, I believe the fund balance, if we, if we assume we end up even on our revenue and expenditures through the end of June, we have potentially 350 to 380,000.
I haven't calculated that, but I estimate it about, be at the 27% level. I didn't calculate the dollar amount on that yet.
Yeah, so the, there, there are surplus fund balances in the general fund that can supplement the budget. And maybe some of that can go to debt service. It would just be nice to be able to factor that into what we're considering for the budget so that we have less of an impact on any potential property tax or fee increase.
So two, two thoughts on that from a staff perspective. One is, if you remember, last year, we did a, council adopted a resolution that, when the audit is done, to allow the finance director to transfer monies. We do have the salt building we have to do, we do have the park maintenance buildings, we have those expenses coming up. The other thing is, depending on potential funding increase for public safety, we're hesitant to go and expend a lot of money because we don't want to get in a position that, if we needed to use that fund balance to cover costs for a certain amount of time, we wanted to have that money. So we're, we're actively trying to be conservative in our expenditures just in case that comes to fruition. If you had, and be a little more direct, if you had a referendum or a delay in implementing a property tax increase or the public safety fee, that's, that's been our strategy in the last little while.
To use the excess fund balance?
If we had to, yeah.
I, I think we, we have a responsibility to stay under the statutory limit.
Right. So we'll be under by the time we close the books.
Well, that, that's the question, is where are we going to allocate that overage?
So it would be, as part of the final budget, we would undo our budget adjustments.
See, that goes to a capital fund, so that would be roads, buildings, or parks.
Right.
Well, we just, we talked about the two buildings that we needed for, so I don't see it going to anything but those two, those two buildings. And then if whatever happens to the public safety, if that doesn't happen, then we postpone those buildings and pull the cash back into, into public safety if we have to do that.
And I'll throw out one last comment, and that's the, the untouchable comment again, is, is 25% too much in fund balance? Most cities are running closer to 10 to 15. And so that's another question that I would throw out that the council, I think, ought to at least consider in, in terms of where we're applying our funding.
And, and I agree, because I'd like to have a little better idea as I go out and try to promote revenue increases to the citizens. I mean, if we're exceeding the statutory limits on reserves and things, I think we just need to be careful. And I, I really, really appreciate all the work the city staff does to budget so carefully so that we're able to run this city on a small amount. I mean, Lehigh is approximately about four times our size, but their budget, when you put it together, is like 200 million dollars. We're running this city on 15 million. I think it's pretty amazing. But at the same time, I'd like to know where these reserves and different things are before we go out and ask for tax increases.
Mayor's opinion is we should have as much money in the bank as we, I like to have savings, because you never know. If we had a big earthquake and had to rebuild a lot of our infrastructure, we would need that money. So when you have a percentage that we're limited to, 20, 25%, when we have a small budget, it's not a whole lot of money. So some things can, can wipe out that reserve pretty quick if we were to have an emergency of some kind. So we just need to be careful. I, I agree, we need to have a discussion about whether it's, should be 20 or 25%. And I'm not sure, I'm an expert on that, so, you know, I like having money in the bank as well. But I don't want to exceed it, and Scott's right, if we're out asking for an increase for public safety, then we need to make sure that we're not exceeding our statutory limit on the reserves. And, and I would remind the council, this is a tentative budget, and it can change between now and the time we adopt the final budget.
Correct.
So, let me open it up for public comment, and then we can close the discussion. So if there's any public comment on the budget? And you have, Mayor, you allotted 45 minutes. We've, we've taken up 33 minutes already, so. Okay, so don't all rush up here at once, but if you want your three minutes on the budget, feel free to come up and share your thoughts. All right. There we go. We are done with public hearing. Council, discussion or motion?
I would move that we approve and adopt the tentative Highland City budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020 as presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Sorry, I'm wearing out my mic tonight. The only question I have is whether or not we plan to elaborate on a fee or a tax for the public safety. Do we need to go that far tonight, or is this just tentative?
We don't. We have two meetings scheduled with the public tomorrow night on the budget. This is just the budget.
Okay.
And then the following Thursday.
It's just not defined where that's going to come from. That was my only question.
So we have two more council meetings before, we have 4th and 18th. Ready to vote? Okay. Ooh, we got all five of us. And it passes unanimously. Well done. Okay. Public hearing, ordinance approval of plan development. This is item five. I do have a couple of comment cards on that. And Tara, is that you?
Yep. Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. So this is the vicinity map. The property is located on 10-272 North, 4800 West. It is located on 4800 West, which is a state-designated arterial road. It is currently designated as mixed-use under their general plan land use map. Mixed-use includes residential, commercial, office, and institutional uses in the, in the same building or area. The current zoning is currently zoned as R140. They have provided a concept plan on March 26, 2019 that did go to planning commission. Planning commission did, did vote to go, to continue the item. They voted seven to zero. They voted to continue the item due to density, housing type, height restrictions, number of units on a single access road. The applicant did go back to planning commission, and this is the updated concept plan that they provided to planning commission. On, they did go to planning commission on April 30, 2019. Planning commission voted seven to zero to recommend denial. They did recommend denial due to density compatibility issues with surrounding neighborhoods. At that point in time, the applicant did, did revise the concept plan slightly. This is the updated concept plan given to staff May 15, 2019. They did have nine units, which is roughly 4.5 units per acre. It is detached, single-family homes. The home height is 35 feet, which is consistent with the R140 zoning. Between Wild Rose and Fairfield, 24, 24, sorry, 24 homes will be on the single access road. They did provide public road, whereas the previous concept plans did include some private roading. They have 25-feet minimum rear setback, so for the properties to the north, that'll be roughly about 50 feet between the properties. They are providing a two-to-three-car garage, which is why some of the lots are sized differently. So the bigger lots are sized to allow three-car garages. As part of the PD district, which is the current zoning that they are proposing to go to, they do need 20% of the residential area to be a recreational area. They are showing .77 acres, which equals roughly 38.5%. This is above the 20% recreational requirement. Majority of the green space around the homes will be community open area, and so that will be maintained by the HOA. Fencing will only be permitted, permitted on the perimeter of the property. As part of the PD narrative, they did provide some architectural standards, which is shown here, as to what they are expecting the homes to look like. Sorry. So for the, do you, do you want to maybe? For the commercial district, as part of the PD zoning, they are proposing a commercial district. They are doing some of the conditions as far as permitted, not permitted, and conditional use is consistent with the C1 zone, which is a different zoning. Building will be a maximum of 9,500 square feet. They are anticipating a maximum of around five businesses. Access will be from 4800 West, and parking is 4.2 stalls per 1,000 square feet of usable commercial space. They, as part of the PD zoning, you do have to have a recreational requirement as well for the commercial district, which is 10% of the PD district for the commercial area. They are showing .11, .11 acres. That's roughly about 13.2% of the area.
Where does this physically lay?
So they are showing, they're going to have pergolas, and they're going to be connecting into the trail corridor as well.
So where is it physically on that picture?
That's the trash enclosure. I'm sorry, I can't see. You're up front, right? It's in the front area. So it's in the front by the trees.
So it's not showing there, but it's.
This is just their concept plan.
Well, usually you have in the concept plan the items that you have listed, and so this is listed, so I was just curious to know where it was at. Okay.
So this is an example of what they're proposing as far as pergolas go. And this is the architectural style that they are proposing as well. For citizen participation, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting on February 9, 2019. No residents attended the meeting. We did do our appropriate notification for planning commission and city council, which involved Daily Herald, state website, and mail notification to property owners within 500 feet. We have received five letters, and one petition has also been submitted, not in favor. For your consideration, the required filings are required for a PD district to be approved. The proposed PD is consistent with the general plan, that they are or will be adequate public facilities. The proposed PD will result in compatible land use. The development standards of the proposed PD are consistent with or exceed the desired quality of the development for the area. As previously stated, we went to planning commission on April 30. And they voted seven to zero to recommend denial. For your recommendation, the city council should hold a public hearing, accept the findings in a timber, and whether or not to approve the proposal. Any questions? And the applicant is here to ask, answer questions as well.
I have a question for you and the city staff. I'm a little perplexed why they, this proposal isn't going back to the planning commission, because it's different than the previous two proposals. I sat in the planning commission on the 30th of April when they voted against it, but this is a different proposal, and I'm wondering why we're skipping over the planning commission on this one. I mean, obviously, you can do that, but.
So my understanding is it's because it was minor changes to the plan is why we?
It looks kind of like major changes to me. I mean, there's one less building, but you changed the roads all the way around, make them public. I, I just don't understand why it doesn't go back to the planning commission for.
So is it your thought that these, these were minor tough changes, that the planning commission would not have approved it even if it came back? Is that your, your view?
I believe the planning commission, they were looking for smaller, less lots, so eight or less.
They were looking for what?
Less lots, so around eight or less, yeah.
And how many lots are there now?
Nine.
And they wanted how many less?
The comments I heard, and if anyone was there has a different viewpoint, I believe they were looking around eight or less. So six to eight.
I heard five or six mentioned a couple times from different members.
So kind of what Scott's mentioning, if you look at this concept there, that went to planning commission, then we look at the concept, the roads changed there, you know, it, it, it has a different feel almost.
Yeah.
It looks like major changes to me. I don't know.
It seems to me it ought to go back to the planning commission.
Well, I, I think it's up to us. We can wait till Nathan gets back. I've talked to Nathan specifically about this. He says, we can do what we want.
I know we can.
Once, yeah. Once, once they have been given an up or down from the planning commission, they can almost bring anything they want to us. But typically, when it's significantly different, the planning, or the council would send it back saying, why are you bringing it if it's that different?
So I'll, I'll jump in a second. I heard the question. My apologies. One of the primary concerns of the planning commission was the density. Reducing the previous proposal by one lot, as staff, we didn't feel that was a significant change. And Brian is correct, the planning commission did make an action. The council has the ability, when they review a request, to approve, modify, or deny a request. So we felt that, in, in implying due process, we felt that it was appropriate to bring before the council.
It just seems to me that if they made the, these changes, I, I would like to really understand where the planning commission is.
Yes.
And that's what we ask them to do.
And our, our intent was to have the minutes from the planning commission. Our, our person that does the minutes had a death in the family, wasn't able to get them, so our apologies for that to you. But the primary concern was the road and the density as far as it related to the homes.
So I guess I would be in favor of going back to the planning commission. Are we under any kind of a timeframe issue?
I, I agree with that.
I would default to the applicant with that. My, yeah, I would default to the applicant and have them address the council.
If I could just add something, this is just an opinion. I think if the, the, the planning commission had a concern about density, if we shared, if we had a similar concern, it would be appropriate for us to say to the applicant, I think, how, how low do you need to go so that they can be confident, if they come back, that we would approve it? If we send it back and, and it comes back and the planning commission said, oh, this, this is okay. If we have our own density issue, I think it would be unfair to have, to set an expectation for them to come back and, and get denied again, because that would be a waste of time. So perhaps we can open it up for public hearing and then hear from the developer after that. So let's open up for public hearing. I have two comment cards. We'll start with Grace.
Mayor, there's, there's one more out here.
Yeah, it's okay. And my other comment was, if you don't have a comment card, and you want to comment when we're done with comment cards, you can. Okay, thank you, Grace.
Hi, I'm Grace McGard. I live in Wild Rose, backing up to this Fairfield Cove plan.
Can you, can you see your home on that?
My what?
Can you see your lot up there on that picture? Which one is it?
It's the middle one in.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
To the right of the road. It's the one next to the pool that's there. Okay.
So it's not that one, it's the one?
Not, not the pool.
Not the pool, the one next, yeah. So I can understand that, I've, kind of looking back through the history of, of. So I can understand that, I've, kinda looking back through the history of Highland, it seems like, and in, and, and the surrounding areas, it seems like, you know, there's been continuing increase in pressure to increase the density, you know, going from several acre parcels down to one acre, down to half acre. And then we get to Wild Rose, when that was put in, the idea was, oh, well, we can go less than a half an acre if we open up open space as the extra space and make it more, you know, enjoyable for the, the public. And so they put in the, the public park, and then Wild Rose residents, they all pay a fee to maintain that public park as if it's private, but it's not, it's public. And so it's used as a public park. And so, you know, this Fairfield Cove, they're gonna have public space all around their houses, but it's not gonna really be able to be used by other people. You know, it's not, it's more of a private area because it's so close to the houses. And so they are going to use our, the public park in Wild Rose, of course, because it's the closest available. And another issue I have is that the space, I, I'm understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the private property is going to be like, basically surrounding the house itself, and the, the open spaces, the grassy areas are land around the houses. And so, so I, I, and I think that when we put our house in, we had certain setbacks that we had to have. So our, the, the size of our house was restricted, you know. I think it was like thirty feet, thirty feet from the back and ten feet from the side or whatever. And so I, I don't know exactly if they're, they're doing that here, but, and maybe they're getting away with it by having the, the ten feet in between the houses because the property line goes all the way to the house. But it, it seems like a big jump to me to go from the feel of our, our, the Wild Rose where they don't even, most of the houses don't even go to the limit of the ten feet. Most of them are more than ten feet from the property line in between the houses. And so it has a completely different feel. The density, I appreciate the willingness of them to keep revising it, but the density still seems way too different. And so the ten feet in between the houses is the biggest issue that I have. You know, I would, I would expect a minimum of twenty feet to, to be comparable to the Wild Rose subdivision.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you.
Just so I understand, there are nine lots on this plan?
Correct.
And the feeling is that the planning commission wanted less?
Five or six.
Five or six.
So Brett, you, you just want us to know that you're opposed to the item? Do you have something to say as well?
This is a form to talk, are you gonna wait till...
No, no, no.
No, this is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, so you have three minutes.
I'll be real quick. So first of all, I'll go on record, I am supportive of, of working with Tori and the developers to find something that would be accommodating to the neighbors. And I have talked to them, I've talked to both Tori and the developers, and my suggestion was, and by the way, I put a note out to our neighborhood for those that responded, and I don't wanna pretend I represent all the neighbors, but those that responded said that they would be willing to support five or six homes with a half cul-de-sac, with something comparable to what we have, thirty-foot setbacks, and, and anyway, a little different this. So we see some improvement.
And the business on the, on the frontage?
That, that's not our preference, but we understand that. We understand that someone's gonna have a hard time trying to develop. If we had our way, it would be, let's not put fast food there. Something that would add to the neighborhood, a business office would be better. So the thing I wanna indicate is that, first of all, I am supportive in working with them, and I think whoever stated it, that see what the neighbors want. I appreciate you guys bringing that up. I know it's not our decision, it's your decision, but I hope you can listen to us. Originally, this is the, the third version, and we're concerned about our property values. We're concerned about safety, we're concerned about no access road. That's another issue you guys just brought up. And if there's no access here, and then Timo stubs at the end, you have twenty-five, let's see, so we have fifteen plus nine, if you accepted this, and thirty's the max, then that forces the next neighbor to put the access road and pay for that. So I agree with your comment, however you guys wanna figure that. So I have issues with the, the density, but I do wanna acknowledge some progress, and hopefully there's something that can be accommodated between the two.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. And by the way, I have the home with swimming pool, so I am directly behind them.
All right, thank you. And then Wade.
Wade Hadlock, I live in Wild Rosa Division as well. It's been stated that I'm trying to block development, and I just wanted to say for the record that I'm not against the lot being developed. I'm not against it being developed more than R one forty that it is. But I did have concerns, and some of those concerns have been resolved. One of them was the private roads for a small HOA. They've been taken out with the public road, and I like the public road approach to this. So also the setbacks to the north are better than they were in the other plans. So I see some big improvements there. When it comes to the density, Wild Rose is closer, if you count the park space, it's closer to one home per acre than four point five homes per acre. If you put five homes in there, you'd have two point five per acre, which is still higher density than Wild Rose, but it would feel close even though there's no park. So concessions are, they're getting commercial on the front, they're getting, they're not having to provide the same open space that Wild Rose had. And so I do feel like a compromise of five eight, five homes would be a good one. Now, it's a PD, so I don't see any lots, I just see five home sites, or nine home sites here. The ten feet between homes is not the setback like you would think with lots, because there'd be ten feet setback on both lots. So really, these, the ten feet between homes is really like a five-foot setback if they were lots, because you gotta add it together. So my takeaway would be, if the roads were the same as what's proposed here, and the commercial is the same as what was proposed here, if there was five lots, or five home sites, I would support it because it would have the same feel of the neighborhood. I don't believe that the forty-eight hundred access is ever gonna happen if it happens one lot at a time. So as a compromise to allow the current owner to build now, if you allowed five homes, that would still grant five homes to the next one and five homes to the one after that, you'd hit your thirty. Everybody can develop without a forty-eight hundred access, right? But if you're going over five homes, and you let the next one go over five, and the next one go over five, then all of a sudden, you have that issue. So I feel like either, if you can amend this to five, I would even not be opposed to it tonight. I don't know if that's possible, you'd have to ask staff, but if it was five with the same road plan, I mean, if you amended to five, the cul-de-sac could be shorter, saving the developer on costs. But, and the lots would be bigger if they made the cul-de-sac shorter. So I'm supportive of developing, I'm supportive of doing something. And with five lots, R one forty to five lots and commercial, that's still a, a big gain, I think, for the rezone, for the landowner. So I don't, I don't know if you wanna go back or not, have the planning commission or planning zoning look, like, look at it again. But that's really, the hangup is the density. If you could, if you could do the planned and do the other access, the higher density might be more supported with the other access. But I think you've got a way to allow the developer to build now. The other option would be commercial in the front and R one twenty in the back. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else wanna comment? Did I see one more card come up?
That was his.
Okay, enough of that, all right? Okay, any other comments? If not, public hearing is closed.
You got it right before the gavel, good job.
Neil Evans, once again, back on this. Are you ready to accept this same plan on every two point eight five acres throughout the rest of the city? If you're taking out half of that two point five acre, or eight, five acres for commercial, and then you're putting nine residents on the remaining acre, acre and a half, is this what our city's gonna look like? I just ask you, I just ask you to think about that.
Okay, thank you, Neil. I'm gonna close the public hearing and then allow the developer to come up. And then council, developer can make your comments, council can respond. Let me ask questions.
Mayor of council, thank you for giving me the time to talk to you tonight.
Could I get your name?
I'm sorry, Michael Brodsky, and my address is three oh eight east, forty-five hundred south in Mary. And I'm the owner of Hamlet Homes and Hamlet Development. I'm, these presentations that you're seeing are, are designs, and the homes that we've put up here are the homes that Hamlet is, is proposing to be building here. Thank you. We had a pretty extensive presentation to show to you tonight that I'm not gonna bother with. Much of it is a replication of what staff has already shown you. We've gone through the history of the various changes that we've made to our proposal. I almost feel a need to apologize to you because of presenting a plan that was so significantly different than what you wanna see here. Or at least, and when I say you, I'm talking about your city. I made the mistake of thinking that you made a master plan and that you had some idea of what you wanted the master plan to reflect. I created a design, and I say I, because I was pretty instrumental in driving the direction it went. I created a design that was consistent with the kind of master plan that I saw here. You're talking about wanting a mixed-use neighborhood. You see, this is a transition between residential, lower-density residential and commercial. You've asked for a commercial component. In fact, many of the neighbors applauded. I don't know exactly applauded, but they supported the concept of the commercial frontage. With this kind of a mixed use, normally, in, in a transition between a lower-density residential section and a commercial section, which it truly is, you expect to see higher-density residential. The density that we're just proposing at nine to an acre, by the way, I'm sorry, nine houses on two acres is four and a half homes to an acre. That's not, in most jurisdictions, and I know we are in Highland, but most jurisdictions, that's not considered high-density. I, I'd like to ask the council to help me understand what it is when you created this master plan that you visualized for this area. Help me understand what you want, because the main objection to the neighborhoods, adjacent neighborhoods, is density. They think that there's too many houses in here. What did the city visualize, and can I ask that question? What did the city visualize when you identified this in your plan as mixed-use? Is it fair for me to ask that question?
It absolutely is, council.
Well, I was here when the, when this passed. Yeah, my vision was not to have apartments in high-density as we describe it from Highland. You said it's not high-density from other locations, but Highland isn't like other locations. Four point five is high-density in Highland. And you're transitioning from an R one forty next to it into four point five. R one forty is one home per acre.
And does your master plan also talk about this as meeting the state's affordable housing needs in this location? Because I believe it does.
Well, that's a much bigger and broader question than just this particular piece of property. And we are meeting the requirements from the state in high-density, but there's lots of discussion, or not high-density, in affordable housing. But that's, that's a much bigger, broader piece than what this property here is adding to it.
You know, a, a higher density doesn't necessarily mean affordable. We've, we've discovered here in Highland that the higher the density doesn't necessarily mean the price of the home comes down. So my, my feeling is that what I envisioned was something similar to what you've proposed, but not necessarily nine, nine there, that it would be a smaller group. That would be my impression. I, I like the idea, and I'm appreciative of the support that the neighbors have with regard to the design. It's just the number of homes that is the issue.
And, and usually, this sort of venue is a presentation, and you listen. And I'm asking for feedback, I'm asking for a discussion. It's, it's a little unusual.
It's fair, and you have every right to do that, and I appreciate it.
Absolutely, yeah.
I was on the council when we talked about this area too. So the general feeling was, with the expansion of forty-eight hundred west into North County Boulevard, which is a major arterial, that it made sense to have what we called mixed-use along that road, either offices or some sort of commercial, because Cedar Hills is always putting in some commercial, across from the high school, busy road. We didn't think that someone would wanna build a palatial home on that road, right there. But it made sense that we'd integrate and, and, and with the neighbors, the neighboring area. And I think the problem is, is what I'm seeing with this, is not that there's housing back there, but I think you've got a transportation issue, a traffic issue, because the higher density that you're proposing would have to go through their streets. Now, I really think, and we discussed this earlier, that we've gotta have another connection to North County Boulevard from this area in here. And I think that would resolve some of it. But I, I agree with Tim and what Brian said, that it's probably, needs to be compatible with adjacent homes. And they're a lower-density, and that's kinda where we're coming from, I think.
So I was not on the council when this was passed as a master plan. But maybe what I would envision, forty-eight hundred west, I'd always envisioned, and when I campaigned, I mentioned I saw that there'd be commercial along forty-eight hundred west. Now, what you're proposing, I don't think on the commercial side, we're not hearing from the residents that they're not workable on the commercial out on forty-eight hundred west. Where my concern comes in is how you're marrying up with that subdivision back behind. If you really look where that road goes down, you only have three homes, and yet you're trying to put in about, I think it was six or seven homes to marry up to the back of their three homes. For me, you know, if you're looking for some direction, I would look for that similar density that you see there in Wild Rose. So if you look, if there's three homes there, I'd love to see three homes backing that. You know, and, and so what the residents are saying, hey, they're looking for an R one twenty type of zone, which is gonna be two units per acre, they might be flexible, two and a half. Now, I'm saying as a council, I would look, probably be somewhere between a two to two and a half, you know, units per acre. I'd like to see that at least on your side setbacks. In Highland, we have a ten, one, one neighbor would be ten, ten from the, on the side, and the next would be fifteen, so you have twenty-five feet in between the homes. You're gonna have to probably, you'd need to be twenty-five feet from the back property line to be able to help that. And I think that's what you're hopefully proposing.
We are twenty-five feet.
That's what I'm saying, I think you're proposing, so minimum. I mean, you know, I am a little worried, I'm hoping that you've talked to that neighbor and how that road's gonna go down. I see it as a cul-de-sac, I assume you don't have to finish the cul-de-sac to affect that neighbor. But the one reason I was concerned about the PD district is I think we are, we don't have a plan, is exactly what you're asking. What's our plan? And I see residential in the back, if we're gonna go that way, I could see even going down that it might transition to some commercial offices back in there, but there'd have to be a pretty good buffer from the residential area. But then they would have a separate entrance. So if you came with commercial, let's assume you had a commercial in front, and you wanna put office in back, you'd have to have a pretty good landscape buffer from those neighbors, but you'd have to have access off forty-eight hundred. In my opinion, you can't access the, the residential neighborhood going into commercial.
To answer one of your questions, I've spoken with Dr. Hobart. I would not propose an encroachment on an adjacent property owner without having permission to do that. So that, that conversation has taken place, and that approval has been granted to us. Now, do I have it in writing? No. Do I have his word? I believe his word's pretty good.
And Timo's right there, and he's nodding his head, so we have visual confirmation.
So I guess what I'm saying is that I would be supportive of five or six homes, but beyond that, it would be difficult. Maybe two behind the commercial and three or four along the, the back portion.
So let's do a little horse trading.
Let's go to four then, that's, that's, that's a compromise, let's go to four. You put one behind the commercial and three, and you have four.
I'm at nine now, let's start trading from nine down. If I were to be able to come back to you, and it has much to do with the property owner, but if I were able to come back to you with a proposal for six houses back there and the commercial, can I get, can I gain your support for that?
I could support that.
Beg your pardon?
Well, you're, yes, thank you.
I, I would not support that, so, so just, if you put four homes, I wanna see you marry the three homes. Now, if you put the other two behind your commercial, and you can make your frontage where you have your, your side setbacks, and you can fit on that lot, I, I would say, look at the R one twenty zone, what your side setbacks, your front and back, and make that home set within that area, cause that's what the R, that those in Wild Rose had to do. Just try to marry what the Wild Rose had to do and get into that, and if you can say, hey, this is what they had. Now, I know that they were R one forty, but you're marrying what they did, that's what I'm kinda trying to.
So Kurt, you're saying five homes you could support, three and two.
Do I have six?
We have.
I would support the six.
Nathan, would it, let me ask a question.
Well, I'll tell you different.
Would it be appropriate for us to, to say, this is, this is the density that we'll approve it at and then send it back?
That's up to the council. That's up to the council.
I'm trying to avoid being a ping-pong ball here.
Yeah, I, you.
Trying to avoid being a ping-pong ball here.
Yeah, we, we.
We don't want you to be a ping-pong.
Your suggestion to go back to planning commission.
No, I don't think we need to go back to the planning commission.
Even better.
I've changed my mind on that.
So, is the question is, how many lots do I think?
Five or six.
Five or six. And what's the consensus so far?
There's no consensus.
I'm okay with six, Kurt says five, Ed says six.
I'll go for six. I don't, I don't know how practical that is, I'd like to see what it looked like.
That's what I'm saying, I think we need to look to see how it really fits on, on the lots. I think it's hard, we really don't see how the six fit and how it marries up to the Wild Rose.
I think what it does, for me, is it does, puts additional space between the homes. And ten, ten feet is just not, just not there. I've lived in homes where, my neighbor was ten feet apart, and we, we were, you know, it was fine, but that's not Highland.
Tim, would you be okay if it was ten feet, one, one yard, and the next one had to be fifteen? What, what our R one twenty zone is like? I think, am I right, Nathan, isn't R one twenty have at least twenty-five feet in between? They have a ten on one side, and then the other one could be fifteen?
I believe so, I'd have to double-check. Side yard setbacks are one twenty.
I think it's, I think it is ten and fifteen.
We'll, we'll double-check.
I can't stand here in front of you and tell you what the side yard setbacks would be if I went to six homes, but I can assure you that they're significantly more than what you see there right now.
What do you mean by that?
So total of twenty-five, not less than ten, so.
Aaron, can you go back to the plot map that shows the homes? The layout of the homes? So we're talking about putting four where there are currently six, and two where there's currently three. Is that kinda what we're talking about?
Yeah, but in Wild Rose, there's only three homes they're backing up to, so you've got one, two, three. And I realize they're in open space, and a lot of those lots, I think are third-acre lots.
We're out of the public hearing, correct?
Correct, we are.
So if you're willing to hear a motion, we could move this along.
So we, we wouldn't be interested in sending this back to the planning commission to make sure that all the other aspects, I mean, all we've talked about is density on a couple homes. There's more to a subdivision development than there is just on that.
The council has pretty much, when it comes to a PD, the council pretty much.
Don't disagree, I'm, I'm talking about the other aspects of what comes in through a development. And the intent of the planning commission is to make sure that they've looked at all the different pieces. So we haven't had them talk about anything other than a ten, a proposed ten residential unit subdivision. And so when you change it, what are the unintended consequences of going with significantly lower density? I mean, half the density of what they saw, and what would be the repercussions?
So what you're saying is that when the planning commission denied it, they only denied it on one issue. And they really didn't look at the whole thing.
Well, it changes the other things too. I believe they did look at some of the other things, but it changes how it, how it comes, comes to fruition with that as well.
Public road is a big improvement, by the way.
I'm sorry? I, I agree.
Public road is a significant improvement.
And absolutely. And your, your neighbors agree as well, and I think the council and planning commission would agree to that, so.
I'd also like to point out that staff has, before we go from here to a final subdivision approval, staff has to approve our plan, and staff has to review all of the little nuances, the technical nuances, of what we are designing and proposing.
I think that's a good point, too. Now, I'm guessing here, and somebody corrected me wrong, is council could say, that we could move to say that this PD cannot exceed six homes per acre, and then.
No, six for the total development.
Or, sorry, six for the total development, and.
And the commercial.
And, and the commercial.
They weren't, they weren't even asking for six per acre to start with, wow.
I misspoke, but the principle is.
You're not allowed to negotiate anymore.
I'm just saying, we could, we could approve a, a density limit. We could approve, say, this zone cannot be more than X number of homes, and then ask for it to, with that stipul, then that would be the motion on this, and let other, other factors, like you talked about, be determined by going back through the planning commission process, coming back to us. And if we did that, I would not wanna have to see it again. I don't want him to have to come back to us again after they've gone to the planning commission. If we approved it with, with a maximum of six, go back to the planning commission for whatever detail.
The next step would be preliminary plat.
Could it come back on the consent calendar?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what I would recommend. If we have a big problem, we could pull it in.
One of the things we've worked very hard to do is, is to make it a little bit easier for people to work with the city and to come to Highland. And so I don't wanna, I don't wanna take a backward step here.
Yeah, the planning commission would sue the preliminary plat.
Yeah. So I think the mayor's suggestion is a good one, and that is that we approve, I would move that we approve the PD district of approximately two point five acres named Fairfield Cove. That will include retail and no more than six homes.
I'll second it.
Can I do a modification also, that that would include that the side setbacks would be a minimum of twenty-five feet between the homes?
Will that work? With your measurements?
I don't know.
We're, public hearing is closed. Public. Public hearing is, public hearing is closed, Brad, I'm sorry.
Are we, when, could I, I have to propose that we, as a amendment to that motion, is that we have the side setbacks have to be a minimum of twenty-five between each, each home?
I'll second that.
Twenty-five or a total of twenty-five on both sides?
You could have one be ten and the other one fifteen, similar to R, R one twenty.
Yeah, it says it has to be twenty-five with no one side being less than ten. So it could be twelve, thirteen, twelve and a half, twelve and a half, ten, fifteen, whatever combination.
No, that, so it'd be, at least they, with the side setbacks, twenty-five with a minimum of one of the homes being ten feet.
Do we know how wide that property is along the north, north end of it?
Bear with me, I'm doing some calculations.
Shall we move the question? Do we wanna let him do some quick calculations, just to see if that's even? So we would, what we would be vote, what we will be voting on when we vote is.
We had a, a motion to amend, and so we had a second on that motion, we've gotta vote on that first.
We have to move to amend the motion, and then we'll vote on the motion.
I can agree to that.
Okay, so it's been moved that we amend the motion to require minimum ten feet, ten-foot setbacks.
Between the buildings and the property line.
Between the property line and a total of twenty-five.
Or you could just stay, match, match with the R one twenty.
Yes, we could do that too. So that's on the table, can we, do you wanna, Aaron, or can we vote that amendment?
And you're saying that'll fit?
Yes.
Just so you know, I, I, I don't, I believe that it should be matching the other property. I believe it should be five, a total of five residential units in this, not six.
Are you making that as a motion?
No, I'm just letting you know as the developer where I'm at on this particular issue.
What you're saying to Cory is that I need to take more money out of her pocket if I go down.
No, I'm saying that by approving this, she'll have more money in her pocket if she goes with five.
No, she won't, because it won't become economically feasible, and I'm gonna have to ask her for a much more significant price reduction. I don't know that she can afford that.
You know, our, our job here as a city council is not to determine what is profitable and what isn't profitable, because I can't determine what your prices are and what you're trying to accomplish and what she's trying to sell for. That's not the point of what the city council is.
I know that economics aren't your issues, I understand that clearly.
Okay, so, Aaron, are you ready to vote?
Yeah, so you're voting on the amendment.
We're voting on the amendment motion.
Aaron, mine's not, mine's showing a previous slide.
Mine didn't come up either. Okay, so let's just do a roll call vote.
Well, just, just hit a refresh and it should clear it up.
I don't know what a refresh is.
Okay, there we go.
It's a little half circle.
Well, I've already voted, but do we need to vote again?
Well, so.
Nope, you're still good.
Ed and Tim.
I voted.
So Tim. Tim, your vote is?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that's, one yes, so that passes unanimously, and now we're voting on the motion, which was, let me see if I can say this right, which was to approve a, a PD zone for this property that includes commercial fronting North County Boulevard in no more than six units on the backside with minimum ten-foot setbacks from the property line for a total of twenty-five between each.
Side yard setbacks. Mayor, would you clarify that the recommended stipulations are actually included?
So you have to include the four staff recommendations.
And, and also include what the, the four staff stipulations on the property.
Is the, is the road going to be a condition as well as presented tonight?
Yeah. So was that on the four, I, I, my memory, I don't have it open to the right page. So was the public road, one of the stipulations?
Yeah. So, didn't Tim make the motion then?
Yes.
Okay, and it's seconded, okay.
And it's seconded, and it's been amended, and now we're ready to vote on that one. Okay, that passes three-two.
Thank you.
Next item. Planning hearing approval of the planned development south of Lone Peak High School to be done by the Boyer Company. And Tara, I'm assuming that's yours as well.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the proposed property. It is south of Lone Peak High School, and east of Highland Glen Park, there is the trailhead over there. And then the yellow line does demonstrate the Canal Boulevard, which is a proposed road coming in during the fall. The detention basin is demonstrated over on the east side of the property, and the Murdock Canal Trail is down the south. In nineteen ninety-five, the land use map designated this area as Open Space Business Park District. This allowed the property to have potential to be utilized for different types of uses. The land use map was updated again in two thousand eight. So the current land use map is demonstrating it as a mixed-use development. And as previously stated, mixed-use development includes residential, commercial, office, and institutional uses in a single building or same area. The current zoning for this area is zoned as R one forty.
Okay, so just to clarify, cause I keep hearing it's R one forty, so it's actually zoned R one forty, but the general plan indicates mixed-use.
Mixed-use.
Correct, that is correct.
Just as a matter of policy, I think that's a good thing, because mixed-use means a, a PD, which is custom. And so you wouldn't put a custom zone in the general plan, because you don't know what's gonna be proposed. So you say what we said, which was mixed-use, makes it commercial, residential, and then when it comes, then we have a maximum, or you have maximum flexibility on how you deal with it.
So in two thousand thirteen, Design West, designed the developmental center site, they had roughly, they had around one thousand seven hundred, one thousand seventy-two units, which also included apartment complexes as well. They had retail, office, and community-based development.
Tara, can I interject something?
Yeah.
That was taken to the state legislature in two thousand fourteen and approved. So that's an approved plan by the state legislature. Okay?
And signed by the governor.
And signed by the governor.
In January of, I'm sorry, the board governing the USDC site decided to sell to the Boyer Group in two, in two thousand eighteen to fund the development or center long-term. The Boyer Group started collaborating with the city in January of two thousand nineteen. Then January fifteen, two thousand nineteen, this is the concept plan the Boyer Group did propose. They had seven hundred and seventy-five residential units, and it also included apartments. And the current concept plan, after we've done some open houses and additional collaboration, includes six hundred and ninety-nine residential dwelling units, and this one does not include any apartments. They have three-entry monuments signed. The main access will be from Canal Boulevard, forty-eight hundred west or North County Boulevard, and ten-one hundred north. They are proposing four residential pod types, which we'll be discussing later. And pod boundaries may be adjusted. Overall area of the pods shall not increase more than fifteen percent, with the estate lot pod areas cannot be reduced by more than five percent. And they are providing a theme wall and fencing plan as well in the concept plan. For the architecture, they did provide some architecture standards that have been established for each pod type. They are gonna have an architectural review community. The HOA will maintain all the open space. Visitor parking requirements have also been established, and setback requirements for each pod has been established. They have also established the maximum number of units per acre. For the carriage and flex residential pods, it will be twelve units per an acre maximum. For cottages, it's ten units per an acre maximum. And for the estates, it is four units per an acre maximum. With the commercial district, it will be also four units per an acre maximum. And they are demonstrating a community park in the center. For the estate pods, they are.
Just for clarity, left is north and right is south on that. Just for clarity, left is north and right is south on that map, right?
That is correct. So forty-eight-hundred west is, um, the north, and then to the left is going to be Lone Peak High School.
And Canal Boulevard, for some people, is known as the Murdoch Connector or the East-West Corridor.
Yes. And that one runs down the center, center east, center east side, yeah. So for the first part that we're going to be talking about is the estate pods. Those ones are technically on the west side of the property, but for your visual, it is on the southern side of the image. Um, they will be backing up to Highland Glen Park. They will have forty lots maximum, and again, they're going to have a density maximum of four units per acre. They will be single-family detached residential homes, and they are anticipating them being built in phase three. The, this is an example of the architecture that they're looking for, the estate lots. For the cottages pods, um, they are highlighted there, kind of a lighter yellow. They will have two hundred and seventy-seven lots maximum. The density will be ten units per acre. They will also be single-family detached residential homes, and they will be built in phase two and three. And this is an example of the cottage's architecture style. For the carriage lots, these are the red ones. Um, they will have five hundred and thirty lots maximum, which is density is twelve units per acre. Uh, shared driveway, twin homes, or single-family homes are what they're anticipating. Um, and they will be on lots less than thirty-five feet wide is the key thing. Kind, that's kind of different between the, that one and the cottages. The front porches will face to the open spacer streets. They will be fa, built in phase one, two, and five. Um, they are also looking at possibly doing an age-targeted residential home in these areas. And other added amenities would include clubhouses, common open space, or other amenities. The, for the senior, for the age-targeted home, it will be, it's that kind of larger person that curves on Canal Boulevard, just for your information, if you're curious, is where they're anticipating.
So that's the north, the, the left of, uh, Canal Boulevard?
Yes. This is the architectural style that they are looking at doing for the carriage lots. For the last residential pod, it is the flex residential pod. Um, they will have two hundred and nine lots maximum, density will be two, twelve units per acre. Town homes with linear groupings from two to eight units is what's anticipated in that, and I think we have a restriction of six. Um, built in phase one and two is where they're anticipating, and front porches will face the open spacer street. This is the architectural style that they are looking at for the flex residential.
Flex residential meaning, what's the flex part mean?
So that one is. Town homes and.
Town homes.
Flexible residential.
What's that?
Flexible residential.
Spencer can probably tell us.
We'll ask the developer when he comes up.
The developer can, is here to address questions as well.
It means you have flexibility.
Um, so for the PD District, we do have a recreational requirement. It is twenty percent of the net developable area, must be open space. The developer is demonstrating a community park that they are anticipating on being in the area. Um, the community park will ha, is roughly about four acres, and it will be built in phase two. Uh, trails, the park will have a trail system connecting to Murdoch Canal Trail, playground, pergola, four benches, basketball court, and two pickleball courts is what they're anticipating on building in there. Uh, walkways will also be installed leading to Gliland, Highland Glen Park, and the HOA will be maintaining the open space as well. For flex and carriage pods, they're, they will have a minimum ten percent recreational area for their, those pods. They are proposing, um, a trail corridor as well, and this is what it will look like.
So a walkway is different than a trail?
Yeah, I guess so.
This is, this is a really positive thing to have it spaced wide enough. I mean, it's, call it what you want, it's, it's wide enough that, uh, multiple people can go.
Pedestrian area.
The walkway or the trail or both?
Both.
Both, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I, I agree. I, I think that, that's a great amenity. So is that eight or, that's eight feet, right? Or ten? Eight to ten? Eight, I think it's eight feet. That's, eight feet is a big. It says eight. Does that say eight or five? I don't know. I just, I got a prescription for glasses.
Eight-foot meandering pedestrian trail. Twenty-foot pedestrian trail corridor and standard nine-foot row park strip.
Good.
So as previously stated, they are going to be doing three monument signs. These are the locations. So two of them will be on forty-eight-hundred west, and one will be on ten-one-hundred north, so that's by Lone Peak High School. And this is an example of what the, those signs will look like. For the commercial pod area, this will be seven-point-four acres with thirty lots maximum. Density is twelve, twelve units per acre? I think that's a mistake on my part, though. I think it should be four, if I remember correctly.
So are you saying that if it were to be approved as flex residential, the maximum density would be twelve units per acre?
That's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I'm going to hold Spencer to the in and out that he promised me.
Yeah, and it's.
Needers.
I thought it was Cheesecake Factory.
I thought we were going to do Trader Joe's, right?
They're open on Sunday.
So parking standards have been established, which is roughly four or five stalls per thousand square feet. Setbacks will be determined by the IVC, and maximum height is forty-five feet, with council being able to approve additional height if they choose to. This is the proposed art, commercial architecture. Um, as part of the PD District, they did do a traffic study, and that was completed April twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen. Um, the summary of it was, existing street system has been designed to accommodate the proposed development. Uh, mitigation measures identified in the report are currently under design.
So going back to the commercial pod, they're not going to build that until phase six?
So that's correct. They're going to build it in the final phases when they're anticipating it, and if it's not developed after eight years, um, then it can go, transition to residential flex.
With the council's approval.
With, yeah, the council's.
Is this state that has to have council approval before, before it converts?
It does in a stipulation, which we'll get to in a second here.
For citizen participation, we did a joint work session on January fifteenth, twenty nineteen. The Boyer Group presented an update to city council on February nineteenth, twenty nineteen. We did host two open houses on January thirtieth and March twenty-seventh of twenty nineteen. And we did send out the appropriate notification to, for planning commission and city council, which involves Daily Herald, state website, and Melda Notification. And we have received one not in favor written correspondence.
Was that a Highland resident?
That was an American Fork.
American Fork resident, okay.
Uh, planning commission did review this site on April thirtieth, twenty nineteen, and voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the proposal with stipulations. Um, and those stipulations were in your packet. City council, so staff recommendation is city council approved the proposal subject to the stipulations recommended by the planning commission and staff listed in the staff report. Subsequent to preparation of the staff report, staff is recommending the addition of the following stipulations. For number fourteen, the maximum number of units shall not exceed six, six hundred and ninety-nine over the total project area of a hundred and fifteen acres. The maximum number of attached units in any one building shall be six. The maximum building height of all residents in the cottage area shall be thirty-five feet. Where possible, the developer or assignee shall prioritize the connection to existing perimeter, open space, and trail improvements. The city council shall administratively approve any conversion of the commercial area to residential. Restaurant uses shall meet the same parking standards as retail uses.
So just, just out of curiosity, um, because it is a requirement for the city council to approve that, uh, if the city council says no, no to converting it, he, his question was no to what? No to converting it? That means it turns into a park or a parking lot? I mean, it's kind of a question of, we want to, we want clarity upfront that everybody knows what that, what that would really mean. If all units, so if you take number fourteen stipulation, if six hundred and ninety-nine units are taken, then physically you couldn't convert it anyway.
Then they would need a major amendment to increase the number of units, which would be a legislative decision by the council. As long as they're within that six ninety-nine, it would be an administrative decision by the council to convert it.
Which, which means we wouldn't have much choice if you came in under the six ninety-nine and converted it.
Correct.
You're going to get legal opinion here.
Well, well, no, I, I would just note that the way this is drafted, I understand the intent from context, but the way it's written is actually saying the opposite of what we intend. It says the council shall administratively approve any conversion. So it should say instead, a request for conversion may be approved by the city council administratively. Do you see the difference? Rather than imposing, you shall administratively approve it.
Right.
We may. Okay.
Just, just put commercial there and then everybody will be happy.
I think we did the math, and it turned out to be a six-unit-the-acre project if they did six ninety-nine. So they have an incentive to do commercial. But I'll, I'll, I would turn some time over to Spencer here and have him explain project a little more and ask him some questions.
And following that, we will do a public hearing, so I had.
Can I make one comment before, if it's possible, I, I spoke with the mayor? So first of all, I want to make loud and clear, especially for our attorney, that I have a conflict of interest in this project. I actually have two. One, I work, I live directly west of this project, and the east-west corridor of the Canal Boulevard is going to practically go through my backyard. It goes through the park next to me. So I'm going to be heavily impacted by this project. My other conflict of in, interest is the governor in two thousand sixteen appointed me as one of the nine members of the governing board of the USDC. So I understand this project a lot. So I want to, just before we start the public hearing and, and, uh, before, uh, Spencer comes up here to describe things, we also have Guy Thompson, that I think would be good to come and explain things. He's a superintendent of the USDC. But one thing no one ever talks about is the purpose of this project. I mean, it's easy to get kind of overwhelmed with density and traffic, and this is in our neighborhood and things. But when the USDC was created in nineteen twenty, nineteen thirty, there were seven hundred and fifty acres of state land associated with the USDC. Over the years, those acres have been kind of whittled off into two golf courses, Alpine Country Club, Fox Hollow. Also Highland Glen Park was part of their land, uh, Lone Peak High School was part of their land. And the hope, I think, all along was that much of that sell, that money would go in to benefit people with intellectual and physical disabilities. But unfortunately, that has not happened. Much of it got moved into general funds on the state because this is state property. Now, this property can't be sold unless the state legislature approves it, which they did approve, yet to be either leased or sold in legislative year two thousand eighteen. Now, there have been several legislators, and also the governing board have strongly felt that any sell of this land would provide funds for the long-term benefit of the physically and, uh, intellectually disabled at not only the USDC, but throughout the state. And several legislators, including Senator Buxton, Hammett, um, Mike Kennedy, Senator Dayton, have worked hard to set up a sustainability fund. So when this property is sold, the money, the proceeds go into the sustainability bu, fund for the disabled. So this has a noble purpose underlying this project. Now, on the USDC board, I've not only been an advocate for the disabled, but I've been an advocate, because I'm the representative for this area, for the local communities. And, uh, the project manager is back here, and he'll know that I said many times, you need to take into consideration density and traffic because this area has grown tremendously. We want to be good neighbors. Now, you may notice that a big part of this project is going to go into the east-west corridor, which Highland and the neighboring cities has wanted for a long time ago. So this is kind of a great, um, amenity for the local cities. As, uh, a resident of Highland, not only as a member of the city council, I've strongly recommended that this project stay in Highland. But there are neighboring cities that would really like it, and so I think you need to take into consideration these things because it has an underlying noble purpose. So I've stated my conflict. I'm going to be involved in, in the discussion, and I plan on voting.
Thank you, Spencer. Do you want to come up and bring as many of your entourage as you are, want to bring or are willing to come?
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to speak with you. Um, we've got Nate Boyer from the Boyer Company here with me as well. Um, you know, I, I, I think we've, as we've seen, we've discussed this at length. Uh, there's been several open houses. We've had conversations with, and work sessions, and staff has been tremendous. The, um, the USDC, uh, board members and the director and staff have been fantastic. So I think this has been a collaborative effort. Um, you know, we started at a certain number and, and what we envisioned the project to be, but we quickly realized that's not what the residents of Highland wanted, and I have to give them credit for, um, you know, providing feedback at open houses. And oftentimes, you know, we, you know, we listen and we hear, and there were some really good pieces of feedback that we incorporated to, into our, uh, plan. I think the thing that we heard loud and clear at the first open house with Highland residents was, uh, we don't want apartments. Um, we had had a, a sizable component of our project is apartments, and, um, we went back to the drawing board after that meeting and thought, you know what? They're probably right. Um, I don't know if this is the best location for that density. Not that we're opposed to apartments. We would have really liked to have done that, but the, the reasons that they mentioned resonated with us. So we went back, looked at the, the plan, we, we adjusted it, and we've come before you now with a plan that we think is a, a good collaboration between all the stakeholders. Uh, as you've seen, we've capped the density at twelve units per acre. Um, the six hundred and ninety-nine unit hard cap, uh, cap is, is a hard cap. We cannot exceed that. We don't intend to exceed that, and to Councilman Braithwaite's point, um, you know, I think there's an incentive for us to do commercial. That is our primary business out on that, that front part, or, commercial is our primary business, and we'd like to do that, that front portion as commercial. We just want to provide some flexibility for the future. As you all know, projecting five to ten years, fifteen years into the future can be very challenging. And we want to, you know, provide some guardrails and some things that keeps them, keeps us, uh, within some parameters, but also have the ability to adapt and changes market demand and, um, you know, the retail world changes. So, uh, you know, more than anything, I'm here to answer questions. I, I know you've had a lot of good questions and a lot of different things, but I, I would just say, to summarize, this is a, a major investment for our company, and, uh, we see this as a, a community, not just as another subdivision. I think, you know, subdivisions, you see developers come and go, and they kind of come in and they're gone, but this is a legacy for us. This is something that we want to be proud to put our name on, and, and we think that the residents of Highland and, and everyone who is involved with the project will be proud of and say, that was a really well-done community. That was, um, you know, it has a legacy that will, will last for, for, for a long, long time. So that's, uh, you know, that's our hope and our, and our vision for this project. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, let me.
Spencer, before he goes, can we ask a couple of questions?
Or do you want to do public hearing first?
That would be fine.
So why don't you just have a seat, and then we'll do public hearing. So a public hearing open, and Candace James? We have twenty minutes left.
Hello, so I'm Candace James, and I happen to live in an area that you're kind of describing through the other sections of this meeting. Um, I live in American Fork in a small planned unit development, um, seventeen homes, and we. we are right up against the Murdoch Canal. We're the very last street in American Fork. We are completely landlocked. It's a circle and the traffic is awful. It's horrible, um, because we don't have any other options. We, and, and most of the travel for us is turning left because that's where the high school is for us, that's where our churches are, that's, most of our travel.
So you mean going north?
Yeah. No, we'll be, we turn.
South?
Yeah, we turn south out of that. So we have to cross the oncoming. And so it's, it's really bad and our backyards, I'm two houses in and we really can't use our backyards. We can't open our windows. We, we got a two-step furnace and air conditioner in our home because it was just too loud to have our windows open. Um, of course, partly, partly during the construction, but since then, traffic's just exploded from what it was originally when I moved here. And so I just hope that you can recognize that and recognize that it, I realize that that's on the very end of Highland, but it will affect a lot more than just Highland residents. And so the density is concerning for the amount of traffic that it will bring.
Well, just, you should be thankful it's in Highland because had it gone to AF, it would have been eleven hundred or more units. So.
Yeah, yeah.
So your own city would have made it worse.
Yes, I, I, I completely agree, but it's, their high density isn't along North County.
No, but they had already, I, I'll tell you, they would have accepted eleven hundred.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I believe, I completely believe that, especially with how our own subdivision has been treated by our city, so, yes, I, I, I completely agree there.
Let me make just one brief comment. Did you, are you aware that there'll be a signal light where the east-west corridor hooks into Harvey Boulevard? And I would think that would help the traffic in your neighborhood because that's just north of where you live. I would think if there's a signal light and all the traffic stopped, you could get in and out of your property easier.
It would, it would, now, because I don't know how the light timing will work, it may definitely improve it to where it's not an issue.
That's, that's really the reason for the, for lights, for signal, one of the reasons for signals is to give breaks so that, uh, other roads can access and get on.
So you can get out.
Yeah, so there will be, but there will be more cars, that's just.
Right.
But the light should be a mitigator on that and.
And the intersection's been designed, so.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry you're experiencing those problems, though. I, uh, we, we can empathize because some of our residents have similar issues further north.
Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Um, there's no name. Wait, it's Michael. Michelle.
My name is Felicity, I'm my husband's neighbor.
Oh, oh, you're being stealthy.
Okay, so we're neighbors, but I am right on.
Could you, could you give us, could you give us your name, please?
Felicity Tate and I live in American Fork in, um, April Ridge, which is the cul-de-sac of seventeen homes. Uh, we've been there for nineteen years and we love where we live. I'm hard at hearing, but I can hear the traffic within the walls of my home, okay? I know that's my problem, not your problem. We're just concerned because, uh, with the six hundred and ninety-nine homes that are coming in and then the, um, uh, commercial business, we do not know really the increase. Every home has two cars, so six hundred and ninety-nine is already going to give us another thirteen hundred and ninety-eight vehicles, plus everybody coming through to visit, to eat. And the new, uh, development in your, uh, number five, that's also going to affect, uh, North County Boulevard, okay, where we live. So we do have these concerns. We are, we've been to our city and it's not their problem, okay? We've been to UDOT to see about sound walls to just try and help us. We cannot, we have a beautiful backyard. I was entertained, entertained my sister-in-law, we had to go inside, we could not hear each other speak. And for me, we're just begging, Highland, this is your area, you're causing us this problem. We're just asking, even if we can get the builders, to just give us a sound barrier wall. We live, we are, and we are landlocked. We're hoping the traffic lights will, uh, avoid the issue and help us, but if they're not synchronized and really, how many of our traffic lights are synchronized? There's the one that goes right by Walmart, okay? There's the crossing for the kids to cross, uh, and if you put the new one in at, uh, Harvey Boulevard and then the one down, uh, towards the temple, the new one they put in, and by the way, our house was hit by a car, okay? So we are frightened. The, um, developmental center have probably had five or six cars already hit into their fence. They've told us the speed limit on average is forty-five, fifty. No, it's not. I can tell you now, the car, there are many cars doing sixty-plus on, um, North Utah County Boulevard. So we're just asking for your help. Just give us some sort of protection and sound barrier. We don't, I don't mind. I know progress is great and we are so thrilled. We live there, it's easy for us to shop. We're great, we'll be supporting all your stores and whatever you're putting in your commercial development because that's, it's close to us, so you'll be getting our, our bucks and our dollars. But just asking for some sort of help, seems like no one wants to help us putting some type of sound barrier wall, um, across our street and, and, and help us, uh, in that way. So we're just begging for help from Highland City because no one else. We're, we're the lost little street in American Fork, so thank you.
Thank you.
But that's all we have to say.
Thanks, Felicity. Okay, um, Spencer, do, can you? You don't have to raise your hand to come up, just come up.
A guy would. I'm just dealing with the legislature. They, they don't let you approach the, unless you've got special dispensation.
We have a kneeling pad there.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Borrowed it from the legislature. Uh, I'm Guy Thompson, I'm the superintendent and your faces all look familiar. And I just want to be here to thank the city, city council for what you've done and worked with us over the years. Uh, this goes back for me, clear back to two thousand and twelve with Mayor Ritchie and Mayor Thompson that worked with us and I'm hoping that we can close that loop under Mayor Mann's administration so that we can get this to move forward. In two thousand and twelve, I was getting offers from all kinds of people to do stuff with our property. Uh, one gentleman wanted to do a water ski park. Another one had, uh, I think they were looking at that Adventureland Park that went into Pleasant Grove, they wanted to put that there. Uh, we had the Veterans Administration that said they'd like to install a cemetery for the veterans within the state. So I was getting offers every week of what to do with your excess land. The state was in the process of selling the state prison. We kind of were the number two real estate property on the list and it made me very nervous. So we decided to take control of the situation and we put together an eclectic group of providers throughout the state that dealt with people with disabilities and said, "What do you think we should do with this property?" Because this is not just a developmental center, this is the entire property for the entire state. So we sat down and we kind of gave it a shot, a shot at it to come up with a development. The road became a primary issue, um, for the citizens of, of, of Highland and American Fork. It was a way to get from the east and west through the city of Highland. For me, it was a road through my backyard and we, we took that very seriously.
And my backyard, yeah.
Yes, right, and through Dr. Smith's backyard. So we were very concerned about that. And as, as we've worked through this, been a lot of talks, we've gone through a number of traffic studies, uh, we pulled up every corner of the carpet and looked at this. Uh, I see it as a very beneficial project for both the city of Highland and for the developmental center and for the people in the state that have disabilities. This money goes back into a fund that is governed by the governing board of the developmental center. They are the gatekeepers. Um, we're able to take this funding and add to what we already have. It's, it's going to be very, very beneficial. And I hope that for you, for the city of Highland, that your budget struggles the next two years are going to be easier than they were tonight, that you're going to see some, some influx into your tax base. So I see that something's going to help you, help us as neighbors, something that's going to be developed from what I've seen from the Boyers, uh, group, to be a ve, very beautiful development, something that we can all be proud of. So it's just, uh, my opportunity to say thank you for what you've done up to this point. Appreciate your support and I hope we can continue to do that, so thank you.
Thank you, Guy. Uh, Timo?
My name's Timo Hogard. I live at, uh, ten two-four-two North County Boulevard or forty-eight hundred west, as we used to call it. Um, so just up next to the one area we spoke about earlier, but this development I really have been, um, interested in. You hear a lot of controversy about it from different people and a lot of thoughts, but this is a beautiful plan. I'm very much in favor of it. Just wanted to be up and say that and it seems like it's been well thought out and, and I think it'll be a great addition. There will be more traffic and I think that's, that's, you're doing what you can to mitigate that. Um, I would wonder on the phases and the restaurants, do they have to wait till the end phase? Because I would love to walk down there and eat, um, sooner than eight or ten years. I don't know how long the phases take, so that's my comments. Thank you for looking at it and thank you for all you've done, Dr. Smith.
So you can, uh, send Spencer your, your top three restaurants? Actually, what's the one by Brigham City?
Maddox. You should know that.
That, all right, it just, I'm having a senior moment that it left my brain, but that should be on the list.
That's my hometown, that's why he's asking me.
I've eaten there once. So any, any other questions from council to? We are, I haven't closed it yet, so you're welcome to.
You're getting your exercise today, Neil.
Yeah, well, we go through this every month, every, every few weeks, you know exactly, exactly where I stand. Let's just play devil's advocate for a minute. What's the problem with this going to American Fork? With Boyer still coming with the same plan to American Fork, they're coming to Highland? Well, well, why, why are we anxious to put this on our border? What's that going to do to us when Patterson comes and wants the same thing? How about Bueller's when they come and they want the same thing? What are we going to do? You're going to take this development and you're going to give it a blessing and then you're going to tell, uh, our other residents of a city, "You can't do that"? Or are you going to say, "Well, Boyer came into it, why can't we"? Boyer said they're a major investment and I agree that that is, but they're not magnanimous on this. This is a major income for them. This isn't just a major investment, they're not here trying to give us anything. Why don't we just let American Fork take it? Let them have it. Then we are not going to be saddled with the precedent of having to do the same thing throughout the rest of our city. We need some protection here. I keep telling you, we're an island here. We've only got so much left to develop. Do we want this throughout the rest of our city? Do we want a twelve-hundred percent increase in density in the rest of our city? What are we doing, guys? I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I've been involved in the training school for a long period of time also. But this is a liability to us. This is actually changing the whole structure of the city of Highland. You're going to let the state legislature come in and demand to you to change the rest of our city? Is that what we want? Is that where we're headed? Think about it. Less precedent, how many times do I have to say this? Precedents, precedents, precedents.
Thank you, Neil. Anyone else? Then I am officially closing the public hearing and council.
Okay, I have some comments here I'd like to add. Uh, first of all, uh, Spencer, would you come up and explain the parkway detail along, um, North County Boulevard, um, along, uh, Cedar Hills Boulevard? Just kind of explained to the council and what parkway detail a little bit along the east-west corridor?
Sure, so, uh, North County Boulevard, we will have a twenty-nine-foot right-of-way from the back of, well, twenty-nine-foot park strip from the back of the UDOT right-of-way to our wall. The intent of that is to match, uh, the other, um, trail corridors down, along North County Boulevard. Uh, we want to create a consistent feel, uh, as residents and, and members of the community drive down that way, so there'll be that oversized, uh, park strip there on North County Boulevard between the development and North County Boulevard. And then to a lesser, to, you know, a similar extent, we'll, we'll do that along, um, the, is it Cedar Hills Drive? Um, it won't be twenty-nine feet, it will be a smaller right-of-way, but the intent of that is to provide, provide a buffer between the high school and the development. Um, both of those will have walls, uh, project walls along there, it's spelled out in, in the wall plan. So there'll be a combination of grass, trees and walls and it kind of helps that those areas blend into the overall community and then, um, you know, mitigate, uh, a little bit of the sound and the visual aspect so that the, 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 the community we're developing isn't right up against North County Boulevard.
So on the, I, I'm sorry, I keep calling it the Murdoch connector, but Canal Boulevard, is, is this project designed not to have any driveways going out on the Boulevard and we're going to try to minimize parking and, and, you know, I've seen the cross-section plan. I think there was a desire at one point to have maybe some bike lanes so that you can hook into the Murdoch Canal Trail. Um, I, would you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, you know, as we've looked at this, one of the important pieces of feedback that we received in the public open house is the trails are good, but trails are only good if they lead somewhere. Um, you can't just have a trail to nowhere in the middle of a project. And so, uh, as we looked for, uh, connections for the trail, uh, one suggestion was to connect it to the Murdoch Canal on the south side and then Highland Glen Park on the west side. Um, and then also run those tr, trails so that they both pass by that park in the center of the project so that, you know, it creates this network of trails, if you will, where someone can jump in, walk to the park, walk over to Murdoch Canal, walk down to Highland Glen Park and, and, and again, trails that lead somewhere, um, tend to get used more. Uh, the other point that was brought up is that you can't do the standard five-foot sidewalk when you're doing a, and call that a trail. I mean, if you can't walk next to somebody, it's probably not a trail. And so in our plan, we call out a wider corridor in some of those trail sections where you can, you know, take a bike and, and pass someone without having to go on grass or you can walk side by side or have kids next to you. So that was a stipulation as well. Um, and then I think your other comment was with regard to driveways. Our initial plan had driveways coming out onto Canal Boulevard. We also had driveways onto Cedar Hills Drive and we quickly were made aware that that's probably not a good idea. One, because you have high school students pulling out and high school students mixing with kids, potentially riding bikes out of driveways into roads is not a good mix. And then the same thing could be said on Canal Boulevard. So what we did was pull the driveways off of those and, and have either walls there with homes fronting into the project or in the case of Canal Boulevard, um, you know, they're front-loaded homes or home, no driveways onto Canal Boulevard. And I think that creates a, a safe corridor, if you will, um, for, uh, both vehicles and pedestrians. And so that was a good suggestion. And then just one last point is the diversity of housing. I think we're finding throughout the state that diverse housing creates, uh, vibrant neighborhoods. You know, not everyone wants to or can afford to live in a really large house. Um, Highland is a beautiful city, you have beautiful homes in this neighborhood. We've spoken to several individuals who would love to live in Highland but can't afford to live here. Um, what we're providing for them is some smaller single-family lots where they're able to come back and enjoy the community where they grew up, um, where they're close to family, um, and they, they can do so to, you know, afford to come into the community without spending several hundred thousand dollars, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars for a home on a large lot. By that same token, we have some larger lots for those who maybe have been here for a while and want to upgrade to nicer homes can, can do so. So that diversity of housing provides a vibrancy that we think will really resonate with, with residents and, um, we've seen it, uh, appeal to various people in other communities throughout the state that we've done.
Thank you. I, I just want to make a couple of comments, um, just to answer a couple of questions. The lady from American Fork, um, I actually personally know the person at UDOT who does the fiber optics and does the signaling and the goal is to have all of these lights synchronized. And, you know, I can use my influence with her to get that done because I think that'll help your concerns. Um, and, and just responding a little bit, uh, to other comments and things, I, I love the low density in Highland, but I think as an adjacent neighbor to this project, and I, you have to remember that the neighborhoods around there are buffered by the Highland Glen Park and the high school and things. But I, I think it's so much better to keep this in Highland and if nothing else, because it offers other housing opportunities, one, and two, because it generates a lot of property tax as well as hopefully sales tax revenue and lots of fees. Now, I don't, we have three places in the city. This has always been on the general plan as a mixed-use area. We have mixed-use around this building, we have higher density and we have some on the west side of Highland up in Sky Ridge, there's sixty townhomes up in there. I don't think we need higher density anywhere else in the city, to be honest, but I think that it's much better to keep this project. city, to be honest. But I think that it's much better to keep this project in the city than have it go to American Fork or a neighboring city. And because we lose control of the density and the traffic issues. So that's kind of my personal feeling.
So I just, let me inject another benefit.
Are we closed to the?
Yeah, we, the public is, is closed.
Yeah.
So, one of the things that I've, I've seen at the legislature is Highland is a target. As, when, when they talk about affordable housing, I, I've spoken with Mike Maurer on the governor's staff, and he's, he's actually raised his voice at me. I like Mike, and we get along really well, but he's gotten angry about Highland and the entitled people, and they, they have legislatively made some proposals that would have been punitive towards cities like us. This, this will take some of that heat off of us. It certainly wasn't what we asked you to do, or why we asked you to do, but there is a unintended consequence in a good way for us in this thing, is that, that some of the pressure legislatively for cities like us to, to participate in creating affordable. I think Spencer coined attainable, and I like that. And it's not, it's never gonna be affordable in Highland, just because of the price of land. But it, with what we're doing here, or what's being done here, it is attainable for some. So, for me, it, it takes a target off our back from a legislative point of view. And, and I, there were proposals, legislative proposals, that would have hurt us, and cities like us, that, that didn't make it, but they've been proposed multiple times.
Still, still might.
Eventually, they could come back. But this, this will be, help, be very helpful to that.
So let me just say that I'd like to commend the mayor for keeping the agenda as close to the timeframes allotted on the agenda. We're at forty-seven minutes for this item. So, are you ready for a motion?
I'd like to just ask before, just to make sure, so we're making our motion, we know exactly what. Spencer, can I just get some clarifications? Because I think there were fifteen stipulations that were there. I just want to make sure that your, in your HOA, in, in, in your proposal, it talks about the park being maintained by the HOA. Is that correct? That, so the, are, that there's public roads, but is that just gonna be the two roads going through? You could have the east-west corridor and then the one coming from the high school?
No, the public roads, everything that meets the city standard for public roads will be public. There will be some private roads in those carriage and carriagepods specifically, you know, that are less than the, I believe, Todd, it's fifty-six feet.
So anything less than fifty-six feet will be maintained by the HOA?
That's correct.
The park inside this development will be maintained by HOA. Does that mean it's not open to the rest of the public in Highland? The two pickleball courts and things that way?
The, it, the stipulation is that it will be maintained by the HOA. We have had conversations about looking at opening, having the city maintain it. We said we're open to that conversation, but we were planning on the HOA maintaining. I think the only stipulation under which it may potentially be maintained by the city is if we build it on the front end. But again, that was just a pie-in-the-sky idea. Our plan is to, to build it and maintain it.
So what we're approving tonight, it's an HOA.
Correct.
Boyer put in the park, and it's HOA maintained, but it's open to the public.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that is the plan, and it's, we're not gonna have signs out there that say Ridge, Ridgeview residents only know.
Is there any open space inside this subdivision you're looking for the city to maintain?
No, there's not. I, I think, Nathan, that we've had conversations potentially about some open space, but those are very preliminary. And the plan, as of right now, and I'll go on record, is saying that the, the open space will be maintained by the HOA.
The trails, will they be maintained?
Yes.
By HOA?
Mm-hmm.
I, I just think we've had a lot of issues. I just want to get some clarification, who's maintaining what, but the trails are open to the public?
That's correct. Okay.
The, the next thing is, is in your park, you have in your proposal that at forty-five percent is when you're, it triggers, that you have to build a park. I thought there was some discussion that it would happen at thirty-five percent.
And I think that's what the, the-
That's in the stipulation. It is in the, okay. I, I read through them. I didn't see that, so.
Number-
Item seven.
Okay. Other than I would, I do appreciate, Spencer, you, you've taken a lot of time with different residents. You've been available, you've been available for council. We had questions. I know there are some things that I'd sent in, that you've been very responsive to our residents, and I want to tell you thank you. I know there's been some questions, and, and I have the same concern of going, "How does this fit inside Highland? Are we setting a precedence"? And as I look at this, as we look at our general plan, there was two areas specified to be a mixed-use, which would have higher density, our town center, and actually over in this specific space here. So as I look at it, you know, in our general plan, it talks about this being mixed-use. The elements should be similar to the Highland Town Center. It talks about it, that they should implement measures that would be considered higher-density alternatives. I'm, so I'm just looking, our own general plan has kind of said, "This is the area", and I'm with Scott. I don't see this needs to transfer over into other areas. There's been some brought up about one or two of the larger parcels. I don't see, in our general plan, we didn't specify them as mixed-use, and they are R140 currently. I know there's one proposal, I think, that's coming in, that, you know, it used to be the old Reinhardt property or Jardine property, it's gonna be coming in here shortly. We got the Bueller, and we've got the, the Longhorn property, which I would call, I don't see those being, do we have any problems if we, does anyone have concerns if we approve this? And I'm asking the attorney, if we approve this, we're not setting a precedence that those others have to go that way?
Correct.
So this, this property is coming from the state. It's stipulated from the state. Highland City is subordinate to the state. And so, if they're forcing this, this will not be the same situation as other, any other property. It does not set a precedent from the standpoint of, "We have to approve anything else as a high density". This is one where this developer could go to another city. Because of the physical location, it could be annexed in to American Fork, and then they could put the higher density in. We, as a city, don't have any other property this size that is adjacent to any other property that could be annexed in.
Or that is owned by the state.
And it's not owned by the state, who is telling us that this is what they're selling it for, and this is the density that they could have at that price. So Boyer has done, in my opinion, a commendable job in trying to make this as much Highland as possible. And I'm very grateful for all the time that you've spent with me, Spencer, and, and I know you've, you've spent a lot of time with everybody else here, as well as staff and neighbors and all of those other things. I came here because of the high den, or low density. I love Highland because of that. This is not something I take lightly, but for the record, this is better to have inside of Highland, so that we have control and have a lower density and have better amenities than have this right at our border that nobody would know that it is not Highland, and have the problems that would come with it, and not have any control over it. So in my opinion, this is better for the residents of Highland. Even from a person who believes in low density, this is better to have in Highland, and it does not set a precedent that we couldn't talk to any other developer and say, "No, you don't meet the same conditions. This is not a precedent that you can match."
Just short comment. First of all, you've dropped the density by thirty-seven percent from the original plan. I mean, that's pretty good, I think. The other thing is, is you really worked hard to help move the traffic from the high school, which has been a really problem. So the traffic can now go down south to a, a light, go down Canal Boulevard, but they can also go through your development, because you have one opening right by the end of their parking lot. And if they follow the speed limit and stuff, they can go right on the connector there. So I think there's some real nice things here that it helps with the traffic as well. So, we appreciate that.
Before we do a motion, do we need to do anything with number nineteen-ten, where it says the city council shall administrate? Do we need to change that wording there?
I say just take out the word "shall administratively" and just say "may approve". I don't really have to have "administratively". Just swap out the word "shall" and just put "may", I guess.
That's fine. That would be a simple-
Is that making sure that it has to come back to city council before they just also trigger out a commercial?
Yes.
Spencer, just a couple of items. First, a comment, thanking you for all the accommodations that you've made. The other question I have is, the commercial is actually set for the final phase. Are there specific trigger points that that would start earlier than anticipated?
We would love to start it earlier. I think that's more market-driven than anything else. You know, we've experienced this in other developments, where there's a lot of green surrounding potential retail sites. I think retail or office users can be a little bit wary, so I think getting rooftops in there will probably be the biggest thing we can do to help jump-start commercial. But our intent would be to develop that as soon as the market is there, and hopefully that's sooner rather than later.
Okay, so it's not necessarily a phase, it's based on what the market will bear?
Yeah, it's, it's there, and we've just put it as the last, because typically, that's what we see. And if I'm gonna get in and out for the mayor, it's gonna take a really long time, so.
If ever. That's big fat tongue-in-cheek, so.
Yes.
Thanks again.
No, thank you. And, and I want to tell you, you've been a great council to work with. I, I appreciate it. You've been very forthright. You've had really valuable feedback, and I appreciate the, the willingness to communicate and to provide information. And I know that it's hard to agree on everything, but you've been very fair and very, you know, like I said, you, you've influenced this, this plan significantly, and I think it's a better plan because of your influence.
Thank you, Spencer. We are, I think we're ready for a motion. Good?
Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion that we move that the city council accept the findings and adopt the ordinance approving application PD nineteen oh-two, a request for pad zoning subject to the fourteen, or, actually, there's fifteen stipulations.
Twenty.
Twenty stipulations, recommended by the planning commission and staff.
Can you just add the, change the, can you go back one?
Modify nineteen from "shall" to "may".
Oh, and change stipulation nineteen to "may" rather than "shall administratively prove".
And I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Too much pressure, Tim. I just want to know why I don't have a first name. Is there some discrimination there?
Yeah, it's because your name is long. We, it's silly, it's something with the software. And I keep, for every council meeting I see it, and I keep forgetting to fix it. I'm sorry.
It's not ageism, it's letterism. You're too, too many letters.
We can call you BB eight, if that would help.
I'm long in name, long in wind.
Brian, my maiden name had twelve letters, and I couldn't ever fit it on a standardized test.
BB means by one, good job.
And it was so painful, so I was-
You have a shorter first name.
I now have, I do. So that balanced it.
That was one of your criteria for picking a husband?
For marrying a husband, he had to, less than twelve.
I got the middle name, too.
Okay, that passed five-zero. Okay, that is the last item on our agenda. Are there any discussion items? I just want to reiterate that the American Fork Chamber, Lone Peak Business Alliance, is very interested in having us participate, and so they're after me. My, 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 my plan or suggestion would be, it's only when the money is in our hands that we count it as, that they raise the sufficient amount of money. And I, I think by the next council meeting, we'll have that, and then we can talk about that. But I'm, are you all okay with that? Just saying, wait till the money's in hand, not, not in the bush.
Just one thing, mayor. Reminder of the first open house tomorrow night, seven o'clock here.
Tomorrow night, and then the following week on Thursday, Thursday. And those are our two open houses, where we'll be talking about public safety, and if you have opinions on tax versus fee, those can be shared as well.
Nobody has an opinion on that.
Nobody has an opinion. All right. I would entertain a motion to close, to, to adjourn to closed session with a-
So moved.
I'll second it.
All fair?
Aye.
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 Can we take a couple-minute bio-break?